All right, before I start the meeting this morning, we got a phone call that Mr. Small has passed. The phone call came in about fifteen minutes ago. As you all know, that Mr. Small has been in the county clerk's office for over sixty-some years and served in his elected position for over forty-some years and has recently retired. I know myself, I would torment and tease Mr. Small by calling him the Godfather because he was a figure that long and well-respected by all elected officials and well-respected by the community they served for so long. And, you know, he always done the community right. He always took care of them and he was proud to serve them. He was a well-liked elected official that knew that he was there to serve and he done it very, very well. Today is a very sad day for Burkey County and not only Burkey County but also the state of West Virginia. So with that said, anybody else have any comments for Mr. Small before we get started on the meeting?
I agree with, I agree with everything you said, Doug. You know, I came to this county in nineteen eighty and one of the, the only thing that has been consistent in that time period that I've been here over forty years was every time I went into that building, I've seen John Small from the very beginning when I came here until, until just recently and, you know, I pray for his family.
Yeah, I have to agree. I first met John probably nineteen seventy-four, or you owe me a bone. And I didn't meet him as clerk of the county court. I met him as the Lions Club. And because he was always very active in the Lions and they always ran that little snack bar. And that's how I first met John. And, yeah, he had other interests than the county clerk. And he was a very well-respected individual and, like you say, the best-liked politician I've ever seen. And...
The one thing I can say is he had a servant's heart.
Yep.
He was a true public servant. I've known Mr. Small since about nineteen seventy-seven. And that cart that you're talking about, that's how we became acquainted. He came to the firehouse and asked who could move it for him. So I can. So that's, that's how our relationship began and became, we became friends. And he's just, he's just a great person. And once you're a friend of John, you're a friend of John for life. And, you know, I thank him for his service. I ask prayers for his family. And we're going to miss John. I will miss John.
Thank you. Absolutely. Each and every one of these staff members, any of the audience people.
I've never met him. I've never spoken to him. He was always very welcome. My mother tells me stories of going to the football school. Her father, my grandfather, and said she remembered my father always saying before the bed, "No matter what you do, when you get older, responsibility, you always vote for John Small and nobody else." But as a little child, she still remembers.
All right. Well, if we would, let's stand and give a moment of silence for Mr. Small and his family.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Since there is none, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda. If there's no modifications for Thursday, February the twenty-fifth.
Motion been made to have a second. Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, we have no internal budget revisions.
Yes, sir. We do not today. Thank you.
All right. We can move on to changes status. We have several new hire recommendations received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Sherri Farmer, Tyler Lewis, and Robert Michael Rick, like animal control officers with an annual salary of twenty-six-thousand thirty dollars effective March the first, two thousand twenty-one. Change of status received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Nelson Shoppard. He is going from corporal to assigned as an acting sergeant. His salary will go from fifty-six thousand two seventeen to sixty thousand eight thirty-seven effective January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Changes to status received from Tim Zia for Douglas Webb. He is going from deputy court martial to home confinement officer. His salary will increase from thirty thousand eight forty-four to thirty-four thousand twenty-nine dollars effective March first, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions on changes status? Next, we have approval minutes. I was not present on February second, two thousand twenty-one for a county council meeting, so would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes, February second, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We have a set of minutes for February fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Burkey County Council Meeting, Board of Review and Equalization, everyone was present. Any questions or corrections on those? February ninth, two thousand twenty-one, Burkey County Board of Review and Equalization, everyone was present. Any questions or changes on those? February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, Burkey County Council Meeting and Board and Review of Equalization, everyone was present. Any corrections? Moving on to county council calendars. We'll be here next Thursday.
Mr. President, you approve those minutes?
Department.
Department can send a agenda. Thank you. Actually, let me back up. We'll be, we'll be here next Thursday. And we'll also be here Monday and Tuesday to do, our schedule for Monday and Tuesday for the county council budget workshop. Generally, here in the last year or two, we've gotten done on Monday, but we have booked both days, Monday and Tuesday, in case we do need the second day.
And those, those would be particularly Monday would be an all-day meeting. And what you have done in the past is come to some consensus, take the evening to think about it, and maybe meet briefly in the morning, Tuesday, just to see whether there's any changes that will be made. And then on the fourth, the department heads and elected officials will come in for their, to let them know what's being proposed for next year.
Yeah. Board and Commissions will have Ladbury Board tonight at five P.M., Hampton Assortment at five P.M. We'll also have on Monday, the first, one P.M. Historic Landmark, six P.M. Planning Commission. Tuesday, five P.M. Certified Vistic, six P.M. Stormwater District. Any changes or corrections to Boards and Commissions? We have a bond reduction for Little Georgetown Estates. Lumber number is two thousand eleven dash three three two. Burkey County Permit Number, I guess that's what that is, is, is oh three eight dash one eight. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We also have a bond reduction to paint handling builders. Stonecrest, PUD, Phase Three C, file number two zero one two dash three six one. PCPC number is zero two two dash fifteen. Lots one seventy-three through one ninety. Bond reduction for Cardinal Point, Section One, greeting, file number is two zero zero nine dash two two four. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Another bond reduction for Cardinal Point, Section One, Phase One, lots four through sixty-four, seventy-one through ninety-four, and one forty through one forty-four. File numbers two zero zero nine dash two two five. Engineering Department hasn't made that recommendation. Any questions on the bond reductions? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess. You have one personal property tax exoneration due to taxpayer error, and then you have thirteen personal property taxes exoneration due to officer.
I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
I know that about John.
Yeah, this happened about thirty minutes ago now.
I know him for this topic you're concerned with. It also really from last book. He was a super, super man.
I got to know John. I got to know John. I talked to him about history because him and my parents were about the same age. So talking to him about downtown and the theaters and, you know, and then the last time I spoke to him, not too long ago, was we talked about the old people drugstore. You know, where he worked there, right?
Yeah.
So...
That's sad. That's sad.
John, John issued Sherri and I our wedding license. He probably should have gave me a learner's permit personally, but he issued my wedding, wedding certificate.
Yeah. Okay. I do have one tax error. They filed in Dennis County and they filed in Burton. It's a good amount of state, but it's a tax error. So I just have that one tax error.
All right. Give me a second, please. I'm sorry.
Ready to move?
Yeah, give me a second. All right. I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. President, I move to accept the taxpayer exoneration for personal property taxes in the amount of two hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
And that was a positive motion? I'm sorry. Okay. All favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Say whatever. The record show at forty-one. Is that how you want it?
Yes.
Okay.
Do have, we have thirteen personal property taxes again, correct? Last two weeks. And they total two, two thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents for the reasons that we have listed here.
Okay. Have, I need a motion on thirteen personal tax exoneration due to officer.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the thirteen personal tax exonerations due to officer in the amount of two thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
I need to ask you a question, Mr. Hess. Mr. Davis has asked about when we're going to have the certified tax.
Just thought the words right out of my mouth. I'm just ready to say it.
Thank you, sir.
I was ready for your statement.
All right.
We had, I had to contact the officer to tell them they're getting the numbers. But we got it together, so I'll have them say it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Byron.
Yeah. All right. Board of Minutes reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. A couple meetings. The Board of Health meeting Monday. Of course, the word is inoculation, vaccination, however you want to say it. Of course, trouble is not getting the vaccine, though it is a problem because we don't get near enough.
They haven't been getting it either.
No. Oh, they only get three hundred doses at a time or something like that.
Well, it's mainly the weather or what the people are sitting on.
Sure, and it's mainly the weather. But where they have the issue, of course, is syringes.
Makes sense.
Yeah. The syringes that they get are the wrong size, twenty-two gauge or something. And, you know, that doesn't enable you to get all of the vaccine out of the little bottle. But that's, you know, that's an issue. And that's, of course, Dr. Dolph is now the health officer.
I heard that.
And he won't know about that. And of course, more to Canada, too. And then there was actually a water board meeting, but the health department meeting went over. That was five thirty, or I got out of the health department meeting. Killed the water board meeting. And then I had a, yesterday I had a Region Nine Planning and Development Council Zoom meeting. And they had a guest, guest presentation by Susan Kuhn, who's the FEMA Assistant Grant Manager at State, assistance for governments after disaster. Of course, he's looking at COVID-19 funding. And then, so something was Rachel on if we needed. And then we filled out all the different committee members. And that was pretty much it. Other than, of course, the MAP report, Matt Pennington, Matt Malden. Pretty good. And that was it. That's my meeting. That's all. Enter.
Glad you had the news.
Love them, sir.
All right. Mr. Bell, you're...
I, I actually had, I actually missed the meeting yesterday morning due to...
What?
No, it's actually, it was, I was out of, out of phone distance. I was out of town and missed it. However, I did attend big project meetings with the development authority that it seemed to go on and on and on. And writing it, you already did. So I ended up missing my senior services meeting as well. So I don't have anything to report on right now. But I am giving you an update on that. So maybe I can talk about it next week.
All right. Mr. Whitaker.
I have no meetings to report on.
Mr. Dopeenett?
I just had the planning commission meeting. I had several public hearings. Rather short meeting for most part. But this week, we received a letter from the Fridge County Board of Supervisors in reference to a project off of Running Me Road for main joint and blasting. So went and did a little bit of homework, traveled some of the roads you're speaking about. Sent an email back to planning on that. Met with the Criminal Justice Board last week. Basically, the same report that Mike and Tim had presented to us with all their numbers and clients and stuff that they're working with and the progress that they're making. Had a partner rec meeting. Their five oh one three C has been submitted. They're also finishing up the Peel-Falkmore Walking Park. This is their completion. On Burke Street there at the subway where they did all that renovation, there's a small park there with basketball hoop stuff. Very nice little park. It is. It is. Landmarks was postponed until March one because of the weather. And yesterday, I went and met with the leadership of the work, Region Seven Workforce. And I was able to, during that discussion, I think we can connect some dots. Like when, when the day report or the criminal justice system works with, with Tim, I think that there's an opportunity to be able to, to transfer some of those folks into a program with them to get them maybe an education on a trade. So I, I think we were able to maybe, maybe help each agency out there a little bit, just being able to refer people to them for different programs that they may have available. And Sunday before last, we had a house on fire in Jaristown, not too far from my house. So I went over to see if I could be of assistance. But I wanted to thank the South Rocky Fire Department in particular. They had a good bit of fire upon arrival. Had a gentleman trapped on the second floor. They were able to go in and make that rescue and give him in the hands of the ambulance authority, which, you know, a few minutes later, they airlifted him out. As of the other day, he's, he's still making some progress. But I just, I just wanted to recognize them for their efforts and for their hard work.
Thank you, sir. Didn't have any meetings to talk about other than bring everybody up on some, some of the stuff that's going on down at the Capitol. The bill and the legal notices is out. And getting, as you get, as you get some, get back from the, from the, the newspaper print. And at the same time, it's looking like it's going to be possible for it to move forward. We have the bill for the firefighters that we spoke about is being actually drafted. And it's back for some corrections currently. The property tax rollback clause has been in, on the books for quite a while. It's being drafted. One percent sales tax with the counties is basically on hold. Mental hygiene evaluation hearings in delays. That bill is being drafted. It looks like it should have a sponsor. Taxing of the Airbnbs is, is actually moving right now. It's on the floor. The redistribution of tipping fees, which is, means a lot to, to our solid waste authority, is on hold right now. The bill, home confinement officer's ability to carry is on hold currently. And as you all know, Senate Bill twelve... And as you all know, Senate Bill Twelve is out of the Senate, passed, is in the House. I'm hearing that there's a possibility that the House will get their own bill drafted and with some changes. And that bill's a little crazy, it's, it's kind of like, in Senate Bill Twelve, they're, they're saying that they want the county commission slash council to have oversight, and the health department asked would basically have to get the county council approval, I believe, of Mr. Barnhart, if that's correct. So, they're wanting, because the county commission, county council is an elected body, which is accountable to the taxpayers, and the board of the health department isn't. This county council has spoken over the years, and we have a superb relationship with our health department that is a little iffy, a little tough to decide whether you want to bring politics when it comes to public health.
Well, one thing, one to make a county commissioner, county voting member, which isn't really a bad thing.
No, so, but the hard part about it is, and, and we talked to some people yesterday on this, they're wanting, they're wanting the county commission council or slash council to be, have more oversight. Right? But yet they're, but yet they're, if there's a pandemic or a state of emergency, they want to have the state health department take over.
From there.
Yeah, so it's like, you want to give local, more local authority to elected officials, but under certain circumstances, you want to take it away and put it in the state. And we know, Mr. Gokener, in state emergencies, trying to get something or a response back from the state of West Virginia in a timely manner to do things efficiently and effectively is almost near to impossible. It's just too much control too far away. So, hopefully, I don't, I've been told that that's going to be a tough battle probably, but, but hopefully, we can get that portion of removed, but I think from what I understand, either Senate Bill Twelve will, will go through, or there's a new version of the House, the House bill drafted. Again, I can see, I can see good and bad in it, I can see, my example was when they, when they done the smoking ban, I let the health department understand that I felt that that was overreaching. It was taking away personal property rights and the right for people to make a decision. However, today, I have to say that I, I, it's very nice to go in a restaurant and not have to breathe somebody else's smoke. So, I'd have to say on the record that I still don't defend taking away somebody's personal rights, but at the same time, I will defend and say that that is a nice decision in all businesses, and I see it recovered and doing well with it.
But there, there, and there was restaurants that didn't allow smoking before that ban was in place. So, you could go to restaurants and, and do that. I think the purpose, and I'm sure the purpose of the whole, the whole bill in order to give more power to the elected officials of the county is because the elected officials are elected and they answer directly to the public, as opposed to the health department that does not answer directly to the public. And so, their, their decisions are not going to be always what the public really wants, but what they believe the public should get. And, and I think that's the whole purpose of the bill, is to be able to do what your community thinks you need to have. And if you go into, if you go into some of the alcohol laws in Pennsylvania, our prime example, you can go one county where they, they have the authority and they don't have any alcohol, and you go in another county and they have alcohol, and you go in the next one, it's a, it's a dry count. Kind of similar, those groups didn't want alcohol and other ones did, so it's kind of the same thought for us.
And I'm thinking that, that bill also, you know, as he said, that the pandemic was, it's the health department's job to do nothing but focus on the health of the public, right? But at the same time, sometimes, that becomes tough because it's our job to look at the county as a whole. And, and maybe that's why, what, what started this, you know? It's, we have to be able to make a decision, whether it's, in some eyes, they're going to say it's very favorable, some other eyes are going to say you made the wrong call, but.
We're, we're an example of how that works, though, I think, because when we started this whole pandemic, there was a lot of conversations between, between us and the health department, going back and forth and, and looking at how to structure, what moved forward, and some of that was actually adopted and used at state level.
That's exactly what's happening, yeah.
Right, so, so by, by doing that, you know, by doing what we did, gives a good example, I think, to, to the success of how that could be.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's important to have that discussion, I think that was critical, especially locally. It was, it was critical, and it developed an extremely good relationship. You know, already had a good relationship, but it empowered it. But I think we've seen on all levels of government, when politicians try to get in and make healthcare decisions, it's not a level of expertise, and I, I feel that we need to continue to follow the expertise of the healthcare workers and then make our decisions accordingly with government.
And that's what I said, I mean, our, our relationship with our health department, and Eddie, I think you're dead on, our relationship through this pandemic with our health department has got stronger. And I don't know whether that strength is throughout the state of West Virginia with the county commission, their health department, or not, but ours is, and, and really, the bill, I can understand the bill both ways, I can understand having oversight, but at the same time, I, I think we have great cooperation between the health department and us. And, and in reality, if the things keep going the way they have, nothing's really going to change on that part of it. But I do not, I, I do struggle with, with the state coming in to run our local health department. And I, I think it can be done through the governor's executive orders. That's my opinion, but at the end of the day, we'll do, we'll, we'll, we'll do what we're told to do. But I just.
Or fight to change it next time.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Alright. Any activity on board and commission vacancies?
Mr. President, we have a application for Clarence Martin for the roundhouse, like the scheduling interview.
Okay, any? No. Alright, any other activity on boards and commissions? Mr. Davis, you want to do your state budget revision number nine, Fund Zero Zero One, please?
Yes, sir, the council has before you your state budget revision for the month of February, which is state budget revision nine to the general fund. One of the smaller ones that we've been, that we've done the past year, primarily because there has not been any CARES Act money released since the beginning of the calendar year. This particular state budget revision has thirty checks, and ACH is totaling $224,576. Just a few things of note, we did receive records management grant reimbursement for the Circuit Clerk's Office in the amount of $5,347. IT received ten reimbursements, ten checks for IT services totaling $28,176. And Central Garage received five checks totaling $22,184 for a variety of vehicle claims. Recommending that the $224,576 be dispersed by placing $1,500 in the county council printing account. As I mentioned several weeks ago, that account does have a deficit balance because of some extra, extraordinary printing requirements. Of course, the $5,347 put back into Circuit Clerk's supplies and materials. The sheriff's tax office did receive a check from W.B. Mason for $1,648, which was due to an overpayment. That will go back in the sheriff's tax processing account for '29 supplies and materials. $10,000 for Circuit Court security overtime. They have been working some overtime due to grand jury and some, and some of the backlog in the court system. $100,000 in the courthouse insurance in bond account. $33,721 in building commission professional services. Of course, the $28,176 back to information technology. $22,000 for emergency services, $2,000 for professional services, $5,000 for uniforms, and $15,000 for capital outlay to correct budget deficit balances. And then $22,184 back into Central Garage to take care of the vehicle repairs.
Great, anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis on state budget revision number nine, Fund Zero Zero One? If not, in motion.
Live to approve state bud, budget revision? Zero, what's the beginning of charge?
Uh, number nine, Fund Zero Zero One.
Fund Zero Zero One.
There. Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all voters say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Alright, next on our agenda, we have a public hearing for fiscal year 2021, one for home investment partnership program. We have Major Strand here for that, I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing. Well.
Go, Mo.
Yeah, we're going to keep it open until after 10:15, though, I can tell you that. So, I have a motion to open the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all voters say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Nancy, can you tell us a little bit about what's been going on?
Sure.
Good to see you.
Yeah, nice to see you, good morning, everybody. Welcome. Thanks for, this is our second public hearing, I've only had one at the city. So, this is for the FY 2021 Home Investment Fund Program, or SHORT Home. And we begin the process to prepare our one-year annual plan for the use of these funds and receive public input. Home is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments, designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. This year, we're expecting to receive $426,246. The majority of that goes into, as you know, the Eastern Panhandle Home Assistance Program, or the first-time home buyers. And the money goes to Big City, City of Arts, but it's a kind of a certain agency again. But then we have the Home Consortium, Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium, I want that Mr. Barnhart, he was serving on that. And I, you don't be serving on that. So, you're, I'll be, yeah. And also Ian Gingrich and Denver Hammond are. We'll be having a meeting soon.
Very good.
But this past year, and pre, in this COVID years, I was just comparing from this year to last year, and we did twenty-five first-time home buyers. Last year, we did twenty-nine. With you all, we did ten this past year, I did thirteen the year before. So, I think that's pretty good, considering all what happens, we, we all have to go through. We keep it going. The loans in Berkeley ranged from ninety-seven, ninety-six thousand, keep a little pad in the notebook, all the way up to 169,000. The average range was more 140 to 165. Two in Hedgesville, two in Buckerhill, one in Jaristown, and then the rest throughout the county. One new construction, because I don't know if you realize it, but existing homes are can be new construction. One new construction, there was Orion Home at the Lakes. And I had gone out there last, the year before, and done a presentation to the sales people, so I'll get you fired. Sometimes it takes a while, you know? Historically, we have assisted three hundred and sixteen first-time home buyers in the Eastern Panhandle, since we've been doing this. And then our $4 million of half loans has leveraged 40.5 million in home sales and thirty-seven in their first mortgages. So, it makes pretty good ratio. Then also with the home program, we're required to set aside fifteen percent of our annual allocation for a CHODO, which is a community housing development organization. The only eligible CHODO is the Eastern Panhandle Habitat for Humanity. Tried to get others, but, anyway, so we're assisting them, they're doing another build in Auburndale, but they also got a new one going on in Jefferson County. So, anyway, I'll open it up for comments, if I have any questions.
Do, do you know what the, offhand, what the current median house price is?
Uh.
In the, in the, in Berkeley County, or in the area?
Uh, yeah, it's higher than you.
Oh, yeah, I know it's, I know it's a lot higher, but I was just trying to figure out, I mean, obviously, you're, the people that are coming are looking for assistance.
Natalie on the, on the Home Consortium, she always gives us some stats on house sales. We even have a meeting this fall, so we're kind of like invested. I think it was about a hundred and eighty. It went up, and the sales prices did go up as far as what's eligible. We can, we can assist in Berkeley County, we can assist for existing homes up to 185 and for new homes up to 238. So, keep going.
But you definitely see well under the, well under the median, so, yeah, I was just curious if you had that.
Nancy, in the pass-up of the needs in Berkeley County for home consortium assistance was sometimes greater than, and I settled that word for a while.
Right, exactly.
Um, Jefferson and Morgan, and there was some reallocation of the funding, is there still
We can do that.
kind of a higher demand here, how, what were the funds used last year?
Actually, the funny thing is, this past year, we did ten up loans in Jefferson County. But I don't know if you remember, like, two years ago, we didn't do any. So, Jefferson County is kind of like catching up. So, we did, like, this one I'm settling on tomorrow, she won the Jefferson County, and she's still in there. I still have that.
Well, and I would think, I would think with the additional fees that are added on to the house and their house cost in Jefferson County that is, is, is higher than Berkeley County probably plays into a factor of that as well.
Right, well, and also, it's a seller's market, so what's happening is, like, I've worked with some people, and it's taken them three houses. What happens is, it's a bidding war. So, they'll go, some people, the price might be listed for 150 or 160, somebody goes in and offers 160 so that we get it. But if the house doesn't appraise at 160, then, you know, the first mortgage first part, non-mortgage first part. So, the one I'm settling on tomorrow, this is her second house, and I've had one, a couple, about two or three ago, before that, I think it was three houses. They got caught up in that. It was crazy, wasn't it?
Yeah, my, my, I have, one of my sons just made an offer on a house, and he really wanted the house, so he made an offer $10,000 more than the value, and he didn't get it.
Yeah, and it goes, they go, go. Yeah, and it goes, they go, go, like, you see them when they're listing and they're gone. They could be gone. So, yeah. You kind of, you know, it's kind of been kind of crazy. I still get calls up from out of the, out of state and out of town. The people trying to come in here. But to answer your question, yes, we do have, still have more demand here. So we'll look at that.
And there, there was all, there's always been quite a bit of cooperation between the three counties from, from the very onset. Everyone seemed to work together, and if there was ever any unallocated monies, they were always quick to turn it over to the, to whatever county.
I haven't had, um, I had some action of the Morgan at the beginning of the spring last year, but I haven't had anything because the prices of the houses up and Morgan have really gone up. So I haven't had, um, I haven't kind of had, um, the money. And I'll take city of money. Last year, we did six in the city.
It's, it's been a trend for the last sixty years. Everything starts moving west.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, well, it's been longer than that, Jim.
Well, true.
Years and years ago, you know, there was a whole migration of wagon.
Go west, yeah, go west, young man, go west.
Mr. President, would you like a motion to close the public hearing?
I would.
Just, just for the record, um, this, this public hearing was properly noticed. Um, we do have certification, publication file um, that the legal ad appeared on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Um, in the legal ad, I was listed um, as the recipient of any written comments, either in support of or in opposition of the proposed one. We received none. So I just wanted to put that on, on record that we did not receive any written response at all to the, to the, there's a public hearing.
Okay, we, we can, anything else for the public hearings, Adam?
Do we need to?
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Chester Resnan, Mr. Elliott?
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing, uh, twenty twenty-one Home Investment Partnership Program.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Yes, do we want to go ahead and adopt the resolution with that motion, or do we want to read that separate?
We'll, we'll do it separate.
Okay.
Um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries and um, you have anything else?
Just a quick, quick question, Nancy. Um, the funding for home consortium is all through the federal government, so it's based on the federal fiscal year.
Right.
Any indication of funding availability? Is it going to be any changes?
Yeah. I just printed it out.
Yes, there will be changes.
I just printed it out. I have it ready.
Okay.
I, I, I thought you were, I didn't know.
Okay. In, in the past, it's always been, because as you know, the, the federal fiscal year starts September, October first through the end of September, so there's always been a little bit of, of, you know, the council, you've adopted the resolution and it continued to participate in the program, but there's always been some question about continued availability of funds, how that's going to be affected, some other things, so.
Right. Like, I have, um, I just now got my twenty twenty fund in the, I have the book existence. I mean, I, I kept looking at looking at what went in there. They had my COVID funding, but they didn't have any. And that was, you know, we, I, that was starting July one. I'm like starting to get a bit of my social services. For half a year.
And, and I would think with the change in administration in Washington, that there may be some changes in the funding and distribution bill.
Yeah, and, and the thing we have to be careful with, Nancy, is the cost of material in new construction is astronomical. Uh, the framing material is up two hundred and fifty to three hundred percent.
Right.
So this re-intlectable condo was sixteen dollars in October for a ten-foot stick. Today it's thirty-six dollars.
Well, yeah, that's what happened with the tax, the tax, it's all in there. I mean, at one time, like, to build that house was like a hundred and thirty-five thousand bucks. But it's, it's, it's nine, and that's.
Right, right.
I mean, it's basically the same house.
Right now, a year ago, if you would have invested in building material rather than the stock market, you'd be doing better. By far, you know? So, all right, um, entertain a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt the resolution um, presented to us today on Ju-, or period of July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I have motion for the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, I'm good. And, uh, I'm getting my meeting.
All right.
Yeah, I'll be in the next year.
Thank you.
Okay, y'all have a great day.
Thank you, you too. Be safe.
At this time, we'll take a short break.
Doug, if we invested in a million sheets of O S D.
Okay. Uh, next, uh, we're back in session. Next, our agenda is Amy Serball from Children's Home, uh, House, Home Society of West Virginia. Uh, Amy, thank you. You're here to present your twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget presentation. Yeah, I see you have some support in the audience too, so.
That's great. Uh, thank you so much for having me in this year and for requests. Um, I want to share some information about our last year. Uh, in twenty twenty, amidst the pandemic, Safe Payment Child Advocacy Center and Children's Home Society, uh, did not provide any services that we provided to children during COVID. We served two hundred and eighty-three children in twenty twenty for forensic interviewing services, and a total of three hundred and three children, uh, included, uh, for advocacy services and for child advocacy. One hundred and sixty-seven of those cases were working on children. So despite the challenges of still operating in the state center, uh, we were able to provide quality care to one hundred and sixty-seven working on children, including their parents. Um, the services that we provide include forensic interview services. So when there's an allegation that exists about a child, um, by somebody close to them or you know, a stranger, and then that law enforcement and child protective services refer that child to our program for what's called a forensic interview, not just a statement for what happened to them. We see children who are sharing stories of the worst thing that makes sense, you know, sexual abuse to serious physical abuse. Um, providing that statement at the Child Advocacy Center allows for that child to tell their story one time. We video and audio record that statement, see that one time makes it to a level of prosecution. Prosecutors can watch their statement, um, and not confront any of the child again. The CAC, um, encourages a supportive model and a coordinated response to those investigations. We work with law enforcement and child protective services from the first step, as well as prosecution and other advocacy programs in the community. Having a CAC investigation saves one thousand forty-seven dollars on every investigation. A non-CAC investigation of child abuse allegations costs approximately three thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars in resources. So in twenty twenty-one, use of the Child Advocacy Center after those investigations saved working on approximately one thou- one hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars. And now that we're presenting a budget today, uh, we are asking to buy five dollars from the council. Um, our operating budget is four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of our staff. We have seen a fifteen percent increase in the number of children that we've served in the last five years. So we've had to increase our staff as well. Um, the purpose and the mission of the Child Advocacy Center is to reduce the amount of children's experience, to work as a team, and to make sure that those cases don't simply reflect the support of the children's community. Um, I do believe that there are other people who speak on our behalf today, so I would like to, um, share my time with them and invite them to speak.
Please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's the opportunity to, uh, advocate on behalf of the, um, Safe Payment Child Advocacy Center. I wanted to let you all know how incredibly, uh, the services they provide are not only to the world, but even the children that they see, but also to the prosecution of the offenders who victimized those children. Um, it's, uh, Amy and I were just talking about how, uh, we hate that she has to have this job, but love that she's in this job for what she can do for those kids and also for our community of all defenders. Without the Child Advocacy Center, um, children would be sexually interrogated about being sexually abused by, um, or a stranger, by a deputy, and then by a prosecutor, and then, um, essentially revictimised over a period. The Child Advocacy Center allows us not to do that. It allows a safe and controlled environment for an interview, and it also allows follow-up services for those kids. It's absolutely a huge part of our prosecutions of child abuse, and I just wanted to, uh, pay you and provide my two cents and answer any questions if you want me to.
I think, um, detecting any child or abuse of any child is very difficult position for anybody really, and I can't imagine being a child who'd be stuck in that corner and not know the way out. Um, you know, the, the, um, this council feels, um, honored to be able to change, um, adults' lives, right, in a positive way. But, you know, though, without you, there's, there's no voice for the child. That's devastating. That is so. So, thank you all for doing what you do. We still have the facility.
Okay, uh, next, uh, we're back in session. Next to our agenda is Amy Serball from Children's Home, uh, House, Home Society of West Virginia. Amy, thank you. You're here to present your twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget presentation. Yeah, I see you have some support in the audience too, so.
That's great. Uh, thank you so much for having me in this year and for our request. Um, I want to share some information about our last year. In twenty twenty, amidst the pandemic, Safe Payment Child Advocacy Center and Children's Home Society, uh, did not delay any services that we provided to children. We served two hundred and eighty-three children in twenty twenty over forensic interviewing services, an internal of three hundred and three children. Uh, for advocacy services. One hundred and sixty-seven of those cases were working on children. So despite the challenges of still operating in a safe manner, uh, we were able to provide quality care to one hundred and sixty-seven working on children. Um, the services that we provide include forensic interview services. So when there's an allegation that exists about a child, by somebody close to them, or you know, a stranger in the internet, law enforcement and child advocacy services refer that child to our program for what's called a forensic interview. And that is a statement. We see children who are sharing stories of the worst thing that makes sense, you know, sexual abuse to serious physical abuse. Providing that statement at the Child Advocacy Center allows for that child to tell their story one time. We video and audio record that statement since that one time makes it to a level of prosecution. Prosecutors can watch their statement. Um, and not completely be the child again. The CAC, um, encourages a supportive model and a coordinated response to those investigations. We've worked with law enforcement and child advocacy services from the first step as well as prosecution and other advocacy programs in our community. Having a CAC investigation saves one thousand forty-seven dollars on every investigation. A non-CAC investigation of child abuse allegations costs approximately three thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars in resources. So in twenty twenty alone, use of the Child Advocacy Center after those investigations saved Berkeley County approximately one thou- one hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. And now that we're presenting a budget today, uh, we are asking for five thousand dollars from the council. Um, our operating budget is four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of our staff. We have seen a fifteen percent increase in the number of children that we've served in the last five years. So we've had to increase our staff as well. Um, the purpose and the mission of the Child Advocacy Center is to reduce the amount of children's experience, to work as a team and to make sure that those cases don't simply reflect the poor care for those offenders. Um, I do believe that there are other people who speak on our behalf today, so I would like to, um, share my time with them and invite them to.
Please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's the opportunity to, uh, advocate on behalf of the, um, Safe Payment Child Advocacy Center. I wanted to let you all know how incredibly the services they provide are not only to the world, but the children that they see, but also to the prosecution of the offenders who victimized those children. It's, Amy and I were just talking about how, uh, we hate that she has to have this job, but love that she's in this job for what she can do for those kids and also for our community of all defenders. Without a Child Advocacy Center, um, children would be sexually interrogated about being sexually abused by, um, or a stranger, by a deputy, and then by a prosecutor, and then, um, essentially revictimised over and over again. The Child Advocacy Center allows us not to do that. It allows a safe and controlled environment for our interview, and it also allows follow-up services for those kids. So it's absolutely a huge part of our prosecutions of child abuse. And I just wanted to, uh, play and provide my two cents and answer any questions if you want me to.
I think, um, detecting any child or abuse of any child is very difficult position for anybody really. And I can't imagine being a child would be stuck in that corner and not know the way out. You know, the, the, um, this council feels, um, honored to be able to change, um, adults' lives, right, in a positive way. But, you know, though, without you, there's, there's no voice for the child. That's devastating. That is so. So, thank you all for doing what you do. You still have the facility to, to house children, um, correctly, right?
We, um, we have a shelter right now, um, where we have eight beds. That shelter is currently not used because the number of reports and the number of beds needed for shelter care has been decreasing. However, with that being said, the number of foster children we can care has increased. The last time I checked, which was last Friday, we had ninety-six children placed in Children's Home Society foster care homes. Uh, most of those children are coming, certainly they handle a lot of these children from home to state. While our shelter is down, I believe that is because we are finding more resources for older children, including foster care facilities. Our foster care is under stress. The number of children that we are able to provide, the quality of safe foster care homes. Um, their parents either work for a group or they find another adoptive. By adoption services, shelter services, um, we have a mentoring program that's blossoming as well as a safety program. Um, that safety home program is in their homes so that they can be safe, they can look at the resources that they want and ensure that they're on a good basis. And, uh, we also provide mental health services. When I spoke to you last year, uh, we had one therapist in the Child Advocacy Center. We have been able to increase that to two full-time therapists to serve the CAC. Um, so we have two therapists that are providing trauma-focused, trauma-related therapy for those victims of abuse. Um, and that's all free of charge. There's no billing of insurance regardless of anybody's ability to pay all of our services.
And I just thought that you, um, care for one of those therapists and use of that therapist for a real long-term headache conviction recently against their, uh, especially, um, their own child. All parts of the CAC and, uh, Children's Home Society are really intertwined in what we do and what we believe.
Yeah, there's, there's been some people, um, that use dogs to allow the child to feel more comfortable and open up and do y'all do that?
We have not, um, adopted a therapy dog. It is on our dream board. Um, at the CAC, we are a staff of social workers, so we always have dreams of how we can better serve. Um, and a therapy dog is one of the middle prominent ones. So there are some barriers just preventing us from living that other way. Um, but it is a dream item. There's research always being done to, uh, help it out. The CAC in Frederick, Maryland, that has one. And you wouldn't believe the difference of a child, a reluctant kid who is kind of uncomfortable to talk to any stranger. Um, the timing of pet just opens the door.
When you say that's a goal, um, what's the hold, what, what's the holdup?
Um, so there are, but being a nonprofit agency, there are some insurance costs. Um, our building insurance has a lot of concerns with having a pet. Just for, if there was something that was happening with an animal or somebody, um, our unrelated agency is still having all these concerns. So anytime you introduce an animal, like, you don't know what they're going to do.
Even though it's a certified dog for that?
Unfortunately, yeah, our insurance agents don't have to. So it was kind of taken.
They need a medical doll, man.
I think some of the probably, uh, most insurance companies, and I have rentals, so I, I deal with a similar situation, but most insurance companies, um, will, will allow certain breeds. Um, so that's, uh, maybe that's a possibility to talk about a more, uh, a docile breed or something.
Gold Retrievers are great dogs for that.
I'm very excited to share this feedback with my director because this has been something that I've been passionate about too. Uh, so I will open that door to that conversation with my director again.
Ask your insurance agent or carrier about possibly a numberella. Because that will cover a whole lot of other things and, and they're very inexpensive.
I will think of that. Thank you so much.
How far, how far does the risk pool stretch out?
That's, I was thinking that now. I'll, I'll make a phone call and I'll find out.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, that's, that's a great way for little children to open up, you know?
You're right, it is. And we, um, you know, we also have, I would love for you guys to, because I'd say we have a very child-friendly focused room. Um, it's a little tiny house, so there's a way to carry it for the family as well as an empty space for the child. Um, and then an observation room for our study. I don't disagree with you at all. I've been very excited about that. It's always a dream or item for us. So we have our, our resource dog.
It should be a no-brainer.
Yes, yeah.
It's a shame that the liability issue has created this.
I have been at a place on Manchester Avenue, right? And my daughter actually worked in that facility for a while in earlier years.
Okay.
Um, and, um, my wife and I helped out a little bit and the people we helped out, the, the ones that were in the facility were very thankful, sent letters. So it's, so I know it's very near, dear to my heart.
I gotta say, the last time I was there, I probably had my hair cut when I was about eleven years old. And that little room out there was my barber.
I hear those stories all the time of barber or doctor. You know, we are expanding our services. Um, Children's Home Society in Martinsburg just purchased a location downtown Martinsburg, um, King Street, so we are fully attached from the light road. And we are hoping to expand services, but the Child Advocacy Center is moving into the giant house too. So we'll have a fully operating, um, little house where we can see children, but we are also in the works of putting in a second interview room. So, um, I was sharing earlier that this week we had eighteen children, so we have one more to get. And after all of this, but once we can expand into that bigger space, we'll be able to serve, um, children in the long run.
So if you was to say, uh, the children that were, that you, um, helped in, right? What's the success rate of the child totally recovering and the family reuniting and being a totally functioning family, I guess?
So it's part of, kind of a sign of success rate to that because trauma is the precursor. So for some children that we see, successes that they're able to get up on their own. So it's really child dependent, so it's hard for us to have that as a measurable outcome of what that success is because it's kind of suggested. Um, I can share a couple of, of stories that we had trials where victims felt empowered to testify. Their way of empowering to rest their abuse or in their work and in the sense of hearing. That happens more commonly now, um, because one, one thing that the Child Advocacy Center does is once a child steps through our doors, we're with them until they're ready for us to. So we have children, I'm working with a child who's now a young adult, um, we just got her in housing. I started working with her in twenty seventeen. We were the resident together. She got a great job. Um, that's her success story. So it's different for average child.
Sure.
Um, once a child walks through our doors, they haven't seen their life until they're ready to say what they want to do. Whether that's six months or four years, we're with them. Um, we've helped victims fill out college applications. We have a, um, very bright girl just starting to be a med student at Marshall University. So their success stories are different for what their experience is.
Well, yeah, and I guess the wounds may heal, but the scars are always there. You know, it's, it's.
How, how hard is it to convince that child that it's not their fault?
I think that our team doesn't really develop that. Um, you know, in the interview session, we are completely neutral. We work with a lot of the same investigators. We work with a lot of the same, um, CPS social workers. So when they're responding to those things, they're already working with everything. Um, we also do a really, I believe that we do a great job of, um, encouraging parents and caregivers to that exposure is a process, not a isolated incident. There are many barriers that can be family support, maybe that it's fearful. Um, so we've done a lot of work with caregivers and focusing that, you know, it's, it's important to reassure the victim, nothing that they did, it's not their fault. Um, victims certainly did carry that, especially our teenage victims. Um, but I think as a unit, even, um, the investigation to the prosecution, our victim advocate that we work with in the prosecutor's office, also does a lot of, um, affirmations of it's not your fault. It's not anything that you created or caused, so. Thanks. Can see that as a major issue with the law.
I think it's also to remember the many different types of cases, um, that come through because the, um, CAC interviews kids who have been neglected or abused because they have parents suffering from, uh, predators. That, but, um, and so a success understanding of, um, I guess, getting past any issues that might, that definitely arise from that is going to be very different from a child who's been repeatedly sexually abused by and, uh, a child who had a who sexually abused them. So it's a very different, uh, a very wide spectrum of types of, uh, abuse or neglect that they see there. And so it's really, um, a number of different cases and, and I guess, like you can say, um, success would really pass by the different, all of those types of situations.
So I have to ask, with everything that the county council has, has endorsed on the, um, recovery side through the day report, community service, home confinement, recovery resource center, the quick response team and all that stuff, have you noticed that to help you?
I believe it does. So one service that the Child Advocacy Center does is track every case that we see. Um, and a lot of, we see a lot of that benefit using their left, the civil rights, using their rights. Um, parents who have the opportunity to, um, get support that they need and to, to still maintain their home are more likely to have their children in a, in a safe manner. That is the ultimate goal of making sure that, so the county having those resources like the T R C, um, home confinement as an option. I think that, you know, we all want children to remain in their family minute, but making sure that those resources are provided so that they can do that safely is vital. Um, so reunification rates after children have tried to be removed from the community is maintained. I don't think we would see that happening frequently with how those sort of.
And how closely do you, are you working with, uh, the, this doesn't tie together at all, uh, communities to alternative violence?
So we don't work with offenders anyway, um, so we don't, we don't really see that.
Okay, because I was thinking, you know, some of that would roll over to, to verbal or, or physical child abuse.
Well, that's absolutely the case. There's two different sides of the coin, coinhead service, right? So, you know, they, I mentioned, I guess, work with victims where offenders end up over community health records. So, um, I think that's fair to say that it's just, there's not the interrelationship between those two organizations. If one is offender-based or one is victim-based.
Okay. If you had to ask for five thousand dollars, if my memory serves me correctly, or?
I'm sorry?
You're here to, you're asking for five thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Larry, anybody have any other questions or you have anybody else you want to call on?
I think that it would be actually, uh, if you have a team.
Sure.
Good morning. I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak to you all. I think Amy and Katie kind of covered everything that I was going to say, but, um, just to, uh, echo them. Child Advocacy Center or I think our, our office, the public office, it's, um, a vital, um, resource. And I truly can't imagine doing my job without them. They are, they help me in, in ways that I even, uh, you know, for me, just to, to me to advocate for victims and their families to process. This is, it's very helpful to me, just being one person and, um, and so many people feel it is just such enjoyable. For the children and the families that we work with, you know, we have a community that are victimized.
Um, I can say that each and every one of you have had a very tough job to do in something like this and not be able to take, to, to not carry it with you. It, it's, it's a heavy weight, real heavy, and, uh.
I think they carry it with them. That's why they continue to do what they do.
I know, but it's, it's, it'd be tough. I won't, I'm not so sure I could do that. So I wanted to thank you for going, going to show us.
I wouldn't know how to decompress.
No, um, I, I would afraid, um, the prosecutor would probably see me on the other side of the aisle.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
I'd be right there with you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next to our agenda is Lynn Walker, Martinsburg Berkeley County Public Library, uh, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, request.
I should have put you dry. Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
So well.
All right. Well, thank you for having me and thank you so much for supporting the library. Um, so I just wanted to, um, tell you a little bit about some of the accomplishments we've had in last year. Um, obviously with the pandemic, uh, things have been very, uh, interesting and different this year. Um, but the library was very quick to adapt to, um, being able to still start the community, uh, despite a pandemic and some of those challenges. Um, basically, we did close for fourteen weeks in terms of in-person services. Um, but we were actually still providing services over the phone, online, and through our no-contact pickup service. Um, and after we got our safety protocol in place, we actually restored our in-person library services on June twenty-second, twenty twenty. So actually, we've been open to the public this entire fiscal year, um, starting July first. Um, and our services that we've been providing are same as we had before, checking books in and out, um, you can come and use computers. Uh, they can apply for passports, they can do notary, um, we have wireless access. So what we did though, of course, in order to make things safer, is that we first require masks, um, for checking books in and out. Um, we do quarantine the books, um, for three days. Uh, so basically we don't touch them for three days before we check them in, um, now, so protect the public. With computer use, we, uh, moved all our computers so they're six feet apart. Um, we sanitize computer stations after each use. Um, and we're also careful to sanitize it while building on a regular basis. Um, we, um, for passports and notary, of course, because of pandemic passports, um, this demand has been down because people are restricted in terms of their travel. This, um, so we do offer the service, however, that service obviously is not used as much this year. Um, we do, one area that we have limited, um, things is in-person programming. So we don't have huge groups coming in to do programs. Uh, we have supplemented that, however, with a lot of virtual programming, um, and, um, various online activities. So we are doing that. So, um, what we also saw this year is at first, we had, didn't have a lot of foot traffic. And then as the year's been going on, it's increasingly getting busier and busier. And we're almost up to pre-pandemic levels at this point in terms of in-person traffic. Um, in addition, we've had an absolute explosion in terms of our eBooks and Eresources. Um, they, you know, some months will be double the usual circulation, sometimes triple. So we've really had a huge explosion in terms of people being interested in using our, in our online resources. So I just wanted to tell you a few things specifically that the new, the new services we've been offering this year. Um, first off, we now have no-contact pickup. So for people who are not comfortable coming into the library, um, we do offer, um, people can basically order materials online or over the phone. And then they pick them up at the library in the library's vest to do that. So they don't have to come into the library. They're already checked out. They just come in, grab their stuff and go. Um, and we're, Berkeley, North Berkeley actually has a drive-through window, which is pretty cool. So you don't even have to actually physically come in the library, just drive up and get your stuff. Um, the other thing we've done this year is we've implemented virtual cards. For people who don't want to physically come into the library and sign up for a library card, they can actually call the library and we'll just get, give them a card number over the phone, and then they can use our Eresources without having to come into the library. Um, we also have through the Libby app, which is a, um, it's, it's our eBook app. You can actually go in online and sign up for your library card. All you have to do is have a mobile phone number. You just put it in and you're. card. All you have to do is have a mobile phone number, you just put it in, and you're all set up with your library card to check out the materials. In addition, we have expanded our virtual book and audiobook collections significantly this year. We have basically, we have basically been reallocating a lot of our funds that we were using for, some of them were program funds and other things, other, other activities, and putting them more into our eBook collection. So basically, the big app that we use is called Libby. It's a great app. You just download it on any device, your tablet, your phone, your computer, and you can automatically access the library's collection. And like I said before, our eBook collection, you know, in terms of checkouts, has doubled and tripled this year. The other thing that we have really focused on is virtual programming. We have virtual story times through Facebook and through our website. We have some take-home programs. So for maybe kids who don't have internet, internet access or aren't particularly tech savvy, they can come into the library, take a craft and a book, and then go home and read that book and do the craft that's involved in that book. So it's kind of a take-home story time for kids that maybe don't have internet access. We offered a virtual summer reading program last summer, and we use what's known as the Beanstack app. And this is something, the library has really taken advantage of. It's, you can download it on your phone, and it keeps track of your reading. It has this cool feature where it actually log how, how much you read. So a kid can be reading something, and then he just hits a little timer, it starts timing as he's reading, and then when he's gone, he hits it again, and it automatically logs how much time he's read. And then he can basically, it keeps a log, and at the end of the summer, he comes in, he says, look, I read this many minutes. And then we give him a prize for his efforts, or her efforts. So it's a cool little app. The app also has little activities the kids can do, they're reading related, and that's another, that they fill out, they actually go through and do these activities as well.
And you, and you're going through a lot of it, real quick.
Sorry.
What, what, what are you really, what, what is the most passionate thing at the library that you personally enjoy?
Which I personally enjoy? Oh, gosh. I mean, obviously, I think being able to connect the community to, to information. I mean, obviously, we're the only place where a person can go and get free information on any topic that they need, you know, information that will help them find a job, that will help them complete a research project, that will help them do a project, help them with a childcare issue.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because obviously, I'm, I'm, I'm going to attend the meeting this evening.
Yes.
And I'm not a big library guy. I mean, I'm not even a small library guy. So, you know, it's, it's, I think the last time I was in the library was probably five years ago when I got a picture taken or something for the, or maybe it wasn't even there, I got the picture taken. I don't know. It was for a passport.
For passport.
That was jail.
That was, could have been.
Karen Rice.
Staring straight.
Prosecutor left, right? No, but it was, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not well versed on what the library does. I know there's a meeting room downstairs that's accessible. I take that back. I think I went there a couple of times. The city of Martinsburg has had some events and they use the library, which worked out really well. I think it was a REES auction once that we were there for in a, in one of our meetings, and we had a big issue with a club opening back up. We used the library for, for a meeting for that. But, so I'm not, I'm not familiar with everything they do, and I'm looking forward to, looking forward to learning more about all the programs that are, that are there.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. I would say, I mean, our main purpose is to provide access to free information for individuals. I mean, obviously, if you want to get information, you usually have to pay for that, whether that's buy a book or be able to pay for, maybe provide the internet, which is the same thing. People can get on internet, but that costs money. But they can go to the library, get on a computer, and they have free access to the internet. So, and to a computer too. So that's, that's our, our main, our main goal.
I was, I was going to ask you, on, you know, it seems like computers and iPads and laptops and all that stuff is pretty much like, almost like a TV in people's homes. Almost everybody should have one nowadays. So I was going to ask, who's coming in and using the computers? I mean?
We still have quite a few people that come and use our computers. You know, it's, you know, folks from different walks of life, and sometimes it's more of a printer issue too, because we do offer printing. So maybe, you know, kids do an assignment, their printer breaks, or they don't have one, and they run into the library so they can print out some copies.
I'll have to tell my wife about that one.
So yeah, so that's, that's one thing as well. But yes, we actually get, especially downtown Martinsburg, we do get a lot of people coming in to use our computers. You know, they look for jobs, they, you know, do things related to D H H R and workforce West Virginia.
So about how many people do you have come in in a day's time to use the computer? About?
So.
There's usually a line outside on the, on the side. I mean, I, I live only a couple of blocks away. So I mean, I, I, I come by there and see people outside on the side of the building all the time.
Yeah. So that's probably actually for our tax service specifically. We have, we work with A A R P, and they provide a free tax service during tax time, when you do your taxes.
It's about all year long, though, I see people out there.
Well, that's good. That's good. You mean, they're waiting in the morning for it?
Right, right.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
But, but you, you just gave me, you just gave me a reason to go to the library. When you said that you could go in there and print stuff off, occasionally I'll be out of town somewhere and have something for business. I always try to find an OfficeMax or something because I can go there and get something printed off. So if I had to sign a document or close on something, you know, I can do it, do it through there. But I never thought about the library. I could just look up, find a local library and go to a local library. My wife could go do whatever she likes to do with books or whatever, and reading and looking, and I could go ahead and do what I need to do business-wise. So that's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we do, we do, we do a lot of faxing for people. We do notary. We are not people for fax. We don't have fax machines. So we do a notary, that's another very popular service as well.
Do you scan an email?
Yeah. Yeah, that's another thing. People can use our scanner. That's where you can just scan something and just send that out. We do charge for notary and faxing.
That's great information. Sorry, I, I kind of interrupted you.
No, that's great.
Going right through the whole thing.
No, I'm happy. Any questions, please.
Tell us about H E D.
What would you like to know about?
How is it?
It's doing well. It's, we, it's been, we've been open, they've been open along with, with us as well.
Is all the computer stuff you said, do?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is the second floor at all used?
It is not at this point. No. But yeah, no, you can, we have four public computers available there for use, for the public to use. There's also, we have full service, copy, printing, faxing, anything you need done, you can do that with that.
Is the second floor ever getting finished?
No, it's not.
Look, is there an estimated budget to finish it?
That's actually something that we're working on for this year, and one of our, one of the goals I put in there is actually working on a facilities plan, because we really need to address the issues of multiple libraries. I mean, Martinsburg obviously is aging, you know, and then we also have, Hedgesville not finished. So we've actually, we're going to come up with a comprehensive plan to try to address all these difficulties.
Now's not a good year to be pricing out.
Yeah, you would know. Yeah, that's true.
Not a good year.
I, I would like to mention, one, one exciting thing we did this year also is, we actually partnered with Berkeley County Schools to provide eBooks to the kids, which was, what we did is, they actually, they, they installed the Sora app, which is this little app on all of the school's devices. And that Sora app taps directly into our library's eBook collection. So basically, it's free to the schools. They're using our eBooks. And it's been extremely popular. Last time I checked, we had over a thousand checkouts in a month of, of Berkeley County kids going in and using the Sora app on their device. So whatever, you know, school machine device, whether it's a laptop or a, or a tablet. Another cool thing, of course, is it actually does filter the content by age. So the public library, obviously, has lots of different content. The app will actually filter it, so they only see stuff where they're playing normal. So it's a really cool partnership. We were able to work with the schools and get that set up this year, especially with the pandemic. It's been great because kids don't have that much access to these materials.
Oh, I can see. That's a huge benefit. If they're doing some homework and need to research something and look that up. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. We also purchased two databases for the kids to use. One's called tutor.com. I don't know if you've heard of that, but this is free for students. They can go in and actually get live tutoring help from a tutor. They just need a library card number. And the other thing we purchased is something called InfoBase, where the kids can actually access assignments and history databases specifically to help them with their homework. So these are some new things we have implemented this year for helping students. The other thing we did this year is because we were a little slow at the beginning and didn't have much, much to go on, we actually did a lot of renovations. So I don't know if you've been downtown, but we did repaint the entire downtown Martinsburg library inside. And we also added new floors, a top floor and a children's apartment. So that's really, really nice. So we did take advantage of that time to do that. And then James, I'm just speaking of Hedgesville, James did go in and retrofit LED lights, Hedgesville. So that actually will save us some retirement money as well. So those, those are some of the things we've also.
I know you have a, a community partnership with the school system at Musson High School.
Yes.
Which is, you know, a very nice library, which you facility, like you say, is getting some age on it. Be a beautiful Hedgesville library. You have a very growing community in Spring Mills. Is there, is there talk about being able to expand the services there or the facility there?
Again, this is hopefully something we'll be working on in our facilities plan to try to figure out. Where we are right now, of course, with our operating budget is, is we have enough money to operate downtown in three branches, and that's basically where we are. So any money that you would, you would have to, you know, that would have to be something that either Levy or some other, that would have to be used in order to raise the funds for a building project. But Musson's been working well. We've actually worked it out with the school this year so that the students and the public are not in the building at the same time, just because of COVID.
All right. Any other question?
Mr. President, if I may, just a reminder to the county, particularly the newest council member, that funding of the library is mandated by law, which will be discussed next week when we look at this special tax tab of your levy. It's been in place since Senate Bill 11 was passed in February of 1970. And if you look at page eight of the independent financial statement that was provided for the period ending June 30th, 2020, I just wanted to note that the Berkeley County Council is the single largest source of revenue for the library and accounted for about 38.57% of its revenue. So you do provide, provide substantial support to, to the library, and I think that should be noted.
Isn't it the school system that dropped off a lot of funding from the library several years ago?
Yes, sir, they did. And you'll see on page eight that this source of revenue, council is at 725 and change, quarter bed's at 112.5, state library commission at 662-916, and city of Martinsburg at 127-909.
All right. Well, thank you for everything. And I think the, the library in Martinsburg is a, is a very well-maintained building, and it's got a lot of, a lot of life left in it. And a little bit of lipstick, I think, will go a long ways on that building. So thank you for everything you do and your board. And wish you a great two secs.
Thank you for your.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is Jennifer Swisher, recruitment videos for Central Dispatch.
Before these are rolled out, I asked Jennifer to come in and present them to the council so that you're comfortable with them.
All right.
Well, we're going to hand out our recruitment flyer that we also like to get, permission to use.
Thank you.
We're going to, we put together a recruitment video. One is rather generic for the center itself, and then we did five others, supervisors and dispatchers to help recruit to Berkeley County Central, to make those a little flashy, like some of the other agencies, and get our younger talent to just dispatch.
We've had that problem before when you weren't here. Preach to him, Jen.
These were recorded probably back in December by our PR department. They, everyone that I've shown to, they've been very interested. I think once they had pulled us out, they're leaving you that it'll be definitely something that the little kids will watch.
That is, it should have been the beginning.
Okay, it's here.
Hold on. We think the audio.
Sounding like an album stop.
Definitely some flashy music with it, get your attention.
We even tested this yesterday, so just for the record.
What do we need to get an IT guy?
Yeah, you'd think, huh? Oh, my goodness.
You're starting to make Miss Muck and I look pretty darn good.
Thank you, sir.
The flyer would be something that we would, we would put out at community events. We'd also clean out different displays throughout the county, sessions for people who are looking for jobs. Put this out as a quick pickup.
I think one thing too, Jennifer, it allows people to, to understand what goes behind the scenes when, once they make that call. Most people don't understand detail that goes on.
I wish I could help you.
I wish I could help you.
So, no, it isn't good.
All right, Gary, I'm going to help you out. The reason why it's not working is because I helped you out.
Somebody dance or sing or something.
It talks about the benefits that we also have in the county. So that, the flyer talks, goes into that a little bit, that we do offer benefits and offer the types of benefits, type of career that it is. So hopefully this will help us, not only with doing job announcements for testing, this will be something that can pull people into us and we can test possibly throughout the year, not have to do it just once a week, once a year, where we can, you know, start recruiting earlier.
Where we at case scale wise, in our surrounding area?
I can only tell you, I know that it was readjusted in, was it 18?
Actually, readjusted in, I actually, hard to say.
Okay.
Current fiscal year.
And then, so I know we're very close to jurisdiction that I came from. We're very close to that. It's something I haven't looked at.
Probably the last time we looked at, that we were comparable to.
That's a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
Well, we continue to keep track of things. We don't do a formal market analysis that often. Well, we continue to keep track of things. We don't do a, a formal market analysis that often. Um, but I will tell you, we do lie behind Jefferson County.
Right, and that's expected.
That's expected.
But are we ahead of Morgan County?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's not, that's not much of a benchmark to use, but we're comparable to Washington County, Frederick County, Virginia right now.
Right, so, so we should be marketing in Morgan County? Because if, if we're, if we're enough ahead, then do we get them people? Yeah, I mean, I got a guy just, I got a guy that just came to work for me, I don't know, a little over a month ago, and he's driving in Wartville because there's nowhere.
I think you're gonna find that the majority of our dispatchers, um, are Berkeley County residents.
Majority of them.
Um, primarily because of the type of work. I mean, who wants to commute from Morg- uh, from Morgan County to Berkeley County at midnight, um, or during a climate weather? So Doug and I just talked this morning about the expense of, of working, you know, living in Morgan County and working in Berkeley County. You know, I know you need employment. Those, those issues are secondary, but, um, but when you're, when you're emergency services personnel, you have to be there during times of need. And that's not always easy.
I'm sure there's some people though that would much prefer to come down around nine at midnight than they would at seven o'clock in the morning.
Right.
And be stuck in that traffic.
I have a woman now in the process, um, I think she's just at this next group, um, she's coming to call.
Right.
Our advertising.
Yeah, and, and, uh, the, the whole thing is, is everybody wants to seize the temptation to migrate to the east for a point. Um, sometimes it's work the time or sometimes it's not. You want us to just, you want us to move Jennifer to the side for now and we'll bring the sheriff out and and the sheriff will probably give you a little bit of time, Mr. White.
Sheriff needs to use it too, so.
Mr. President, please computer, go figure. Mr. President, we do have the volunteer.
Yeah, I said something about that little computer last, last week or week before.
Yeah.
That was like, I don't, I, I, I went like that and it didn't do anything and then all of a sudden it went doo.
That's how good she is. She doesn't complain about anything. Just about her.
All right, uh, let's go ahead and do next on our agenda is Paul, uh, Burrows, uh, Junior Chairman of Berkeley County Volunteer Fire Association. I see he's brought some people with him as well. And, uh, Jennifer Swisher from NAMALON, the Director, Berkeley County Fire Association Standard Operating Guidelines. I know PJ, uh, we've been talking about this and this has got to do with the condition D, uh, to, for the modified dispatch. So the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, thank you. Uh, has, uh, sent an email back about in July of two thousand nineteen, we tried to start discussing this. This policy, I'll say the SOG for all the volunteer fire stations, um, for the apparatus and stuff being utilized, we're looking at ways to minimize the amount of apparatus on the streets. For like our high fall volume incidents, weather related incidents such as, as we've recently had, this, this. Those types of weather related times tend to give us higher fall volumes. And a lot of times they're minimize injuries, no injuries, just a nice little state for that. So what we was looking at was trying to better utilize our resources. This condition D policy, it utilizes a lot of other jurisdictions just for that, just for those high fall volume incidents to try to minimize people. All the, the, uh, chiefs that agreed upon, we made some adjustments. And obviously at that time, Ms. Cackley was in the office. Um, Ms. Swisher here has very provided this. She doesn't have any, anything to say negative about it. I'm such a serious person, I ask questions about that. We feel that it'd be very good for the county for the apparatus, um, save on fuel, save on wear and tear and put less people out of the streets than, for reality.
I think one example you give, uh, one time PJ was if there's an accident and there's no leaking fluids or, and it's not in a bad location, that would be the example, that the fire truck would not be dispatched at that turn.
Cause they would still be dispatched. Well, for this particular incident, depends on the, um, fall type of the leaking fluids and everything. That's another portion to it. Just a, it's more, it's easier to utilize like the house, um, a fire alarm.
Okay.
Today, a fire alarm, if your house has a fire alarm and it goes off, um, today, decent weather and stuff like that, it's going to give two, two companies. With this new policy that the condition D in place, it would just get yours, whatever your closest apartment here is. Versus putting other units out in the street. Now, if, um, the dispatch center, the dispatcher's got any sort of information that there was a fire, um, if you called and said, you know, this fire alarm's going off for a reason and there's something going on at that point in time.
Spots in the house.
She would turn right around and change it from a single company to what it requires for that. So that's something that we had put in here for, um, like traffic accidents. If anytime there's a confirmed fire or confirmed entrapment, this policy is, I'm not gonna say disregarded, but it's put it back to its main dispatch. To provide a nice amount of people, um, telling them that life is our passengers. Confirmed life is our passengers.
Anybody have any questions for PJ?
Well, I originally supported going to this code D. And it, it does minimize even the opportunity for them to have accidents or injuries or whatever. So, um, I, I think it's a good idea. I had spoke to Jennifer this week about it. She's in support of it, so.
I was just saying, I mean, it definitely reduces, uh, it's a personal management, basically, your, your reliability. For them, so we had an accident and it, and the multiple snowstorms that we've had at the gas companies. It's led us to two pieces of apparatus, fuel vehicle, that's kind of barbed for hours anymore. That it's already reducing the risk to not only providers, but also to citizens. Minimize and also on the street. Thing of benefits, every, everybody.
Even the dispatchers.
Even, yes, even the dispatchers.
They're no longer having to track it to a company. Less than having to keep track of one of the, first organizations. So, in all reality, we, we really do think this will, we're, we're almost every. They're, they're, the dispatcher's responsibilities, department's responsibilities. You'll just improve all better management. For only these times.
How does this affect, um, I know at one time, I could have said in these meetings that, um, sometimes our fire apparatuses actually go out to protect other public safety people because it's on a blind hill curve or blind heel or indefinitely on eighty-one. That's why they go out.
So one of the things is with eighty-one, as we, we've all said, eighty-one's its own monster. So we kind of have to treat it totally different than we do other orders or other parts of the county. So eighty-one bulldozer, we, we'll still stay the exact same and have a natural plus that potential blocking piece if needed. You know, that's something we just got to, I'm saying, work out and make sure that everybody's in the same cage. Cause it is, it's, it's its own world. You can't treat it like you do R eleven or anything else. And then again, it says in here as well, at any point in time, the dispatchers, um, receiving the information, the departments responding to the incident, they feel that they need additional apparatus, they can obviously request it. Like you said, the blind curve, if somebody hits on the scene, they say, we need somebody else back there.
And the reason why the fire truck's there is because of, you know, you know, just the pure size of the fire truck that it would safeguard.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you don't want to see any of them get dead, but if somebody hits the fire truck versus a ambulance or a big cruiser, you know, it'll cause, cause damage obviously, but it's gonna cause, it's gonna take a lot more for them to do that fire truck.
Oh, I think this sounds like a great idea. It was, it been a year that we talked about this. When, when's the first time? It's probably been over a year.
No, it was, it was last summer.
Was it last summer?
We had talked about the initial policy like in July of two thousand nineteen. So my, probably it hadn't brought here.
It wasn't brought. It, it has been a topic for, for the association for about a year and a half. I mean, it's late spring, early summer.
I thought I'd been hearing about it for a bit. Well, I remember we talked about it in county.
All right, uh, here, take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose the motion, Karen? All right, you have an effective date?
Probably there needs to be a little bit of work IP wise, so I would say with, um,
He can't even get this thing going, man.
I, I don't, I, I would say probably by.
You'll, you'll work it out together.
We'll work it out. And if there's any snowstorms or anything in between, I might go and work it out with the.
Okay. We, we can see, we can see where the problem lies, okay?
There are, there are two other matters that we're in the ring to hit. Um, it's, you'll see there's correspondence dated January twenty-ninth. Um, the first one was condition D, the next one, next one was no fire department dispatched on MBAs with no injuries and unknown fluids. Correct?
Correct.
Are you okay to discuss this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So with the, uh, the number two, with the, the no injuries and unknown fluids, you know, there again, trying to better utilize our resources. A lot of times we're creating more of a hazard than we are a benefit out on the roadway. It's obviously traffic within the areas, uh, quite congested most of the time anyway. As soon as we put one of the larger fire trucks out, out on the roadway, we're, we're typically shutting down at least one lane of travel, um, to protect us and protect the governor. Uh, these vehicles moving off the road, a lot of times we're, we're still shutting down at least one lane. There again, the sheriff steps back there at any point in time, that they would need assistance, you know, from the fire department and they would request a special response. That's obviously still within their realm to request that for us not to block. As we said before, just like in the condition D, that fire truck's a lot harder to move than some of the other BHA's that are on the scene. But some of these incidents, um, don't even get an ambulance dispatched, you know, with the unknown injuries, unknown injuries and unknown fluids. They're not even getting an ambulance. So, you know, here we are, a lot of times going out for a, um, what could be windshield washer fluid leaking out the heat in it. And at that point in time, you know, there's really not anything that we're willing to be able to do to help to get it like that. It's just, the fluid's gotta run out. And as, uh, and you'll be aware, if it's something more hazmat related, obviously that information's only conveyed to the dispatcher. And at that point, fire department, but we're trying to, there again, minimize some of these things. Where in all reality, we're not showing anything, how we're seeing, we're really not doing any good. By going probably close to the hazard. And again, Ms. Swisher can speak on this from dispatch side of it. Maybe provide a little bit more information, but what it would take, entail from her, her center.
That's gonna be more of a, a policy change for us than a minor change in cap. So, but we do have the ability. Like mentioned, if we can, if you feel that there is something else, we can certainly dispatch and, um, ensure that. A lot of times the town, understanding that the ones that are taking care of these small things, the windshield wipers, this won't have gas, three days. And you can blow a certain level, we're gonna be dispatched anyway. Getting to a certain, you have a few gallons. It might evaporate, but it may not be something evaporating. If you want to evaporate, it's something like a litter weight. So, you know, some information given to us by a non-impound caller is how we're gonna. What would be answered those questions of.
Is that, is that a requirement for, I, I know there's a rotation of tow truck drivers, that type of thing, that, that are part of, at, at least that's how I remember it, that there was a rotation or a bunch and you're supposed to rotate or whatever. Are all those tow truck drivers required to carry some oil throughout those type of things? Cause I could see where, um, I could see where, uh, motor oil, um, those type of things would be almost every accident you're going to have antifreeze and motor oil.
I don't know what it is.
I'm not sure what the tow truck is required to carry.
Please may we control, may we retire the parents and take them to tow trucks.
As far as the requirement, I'm not sure if it's a requirement, but loosely you'll find that that is a paper that can carry. Let's take a.
And while you're talking, Sheriff, um, what's your, I'd like to hear, hear your input on, on this change of policy. Are you, you okay with it?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'll say, I know outside is just hearing this unless somebody else is saying it, not personally, not specifically Sheriff, so.
Okay.
He's being blindsided with this.
All right.
I'll be respecting being blindsided.
I just wanted to make sure, and, and you see the willingness, uh, to be able to assist your deputies if needed. Uh, if you see it, uh, something in the future that may not be working correctly or the way it should be, I advise everybody to get together and seek, find a solution. Okay.
Yeah, my, and my only concern is just that small, uh, small accidents, you know, that, that you're referring to right here where you don't need to go out, um, that there's still an oil leak and nobody's gonna address it. So I don't know if, if, if that ought to be part of a requirement to, uh, qualified tow truck drivers to actually have some product or something on hand to be able to do that. I mean, I'm sure they can bill it, um, to the customer that they're towing the vehicle.
Need to, from our standpoint, like if we put the stage ride down for that oil leak.
Right, I get you. Making sure that the leak's actually clean, um, if they had a little bit of stage out. There again, I think the, the fluid leaks, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, depends on the amount.
The reportable quantity.
Actually go to a different card for their dispatchers. Actually just, uh, um, a, a different dispatch outside of there. And it's just, you know, somebody, you being knowledgeable, guys saying it's, it's windshield washer fluid versus somebody who's not knowledgeable saying fifty gallons a gallon, you know? So she's gonna take that dispatcher.
All right, let's go ahead and take a, um, well, uh, here, take a motion to approve, um, I want to say part two of the request.
Make a motion that we approve part two of the request, uh, that's been submitted today.
Second.
Let's go forward. Second, any, any discussion?
Only a discussion I have, Mr. President, is, is this procedure was approved by the previous group of fire chiefs in the past. That's, that's what it is today.
So, yes, it was by the previous. Uh, we brought it up to the, the current fire chiefs, so the new fire chiefs. They're all aware, they've all been made aware that this was, um, being presented to you all. So, yes, it was approved by them. Um, they are aware, they have, uh, checked it.
So I understand. My, my, my only thing is, two years from now, when there's another change, you know what to get from this.
So, yes, you're a hundred percent right. And that's something that we've been working with Ms. Swisher about. And we, um, had this, trying to work with Ms. Cackley as well. I don't want to say trying, but it's working with Ms. Cackley as well. Trying to, um, follow a lot of these changes.
Trying to, um, follow a lot of these changes, so the big thing with the condition B or even the box assignments. If you as the fire chief of your organization, you as the fire chief of your organization, um, approach her independently, not saying that she's gonna disregard it. But any of these changes like this, it'll be coming from the association, to you, to her, um, and not from each individual person, so that we are doing consistent across the town.
Right.
So we're trying.
Which is the only way it can work for us.
It's not going, it's, it's gonna make her life hard, it's gonna make our life hard, and it's, we're not going to get the consistency that we're at. Everybody's been working in the, along, we're trying to get rid to the best of the firefields.
Okay, all right, all fair say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, so move it on to change three, or request three, I should say.
Number two.
Now we're to, now we're going to three.
Yeah, now, so now we'll go to three, so, number three, as you all are aware, and, um, Gary, there's all kinds of people that's been involved in this. Mr. Gerber's not able to tell you as well, but we've been working since two thousand nineteen, trying to work on this box assignment change. We're trying to change the way the county operates, not for, not to just have changed, but there again, you better utilize our resources. With that, there is a lot of things that has to happen within the dispatcher. So, the number of outrights today, if this building sits outside of the city. If it's set in the county someplace, and this building had a fire alarm to go off in it, today, you would get two companies that would respond to this building with a fire alarm in it. If this building was on fire today in the county, you would get two companies to respond. It doesn't make sense, like, um, a, a regular single line mobile home gets two companies to respond to it if it's on fire. Where a McMansion that may be within the county gets two companies, you know. So what we're trying to do is there again, better utilize our resources. Uh, the box assignment concept was, according to Ms. Cackley brought up years and years ago, um, the way she decided, describing was love of variety, you know. So, uh, it was discussed and couldn't be agreed upon. Well, today our fire chiefs are able to look at it and say, I agree with this, but I don't agree with that, and I'm willing to give and take, you know. So they're making a lot of progress, yes, we've been working on this since two thousand nineteen, it's a huge undertaking. We're trying to start this process, there are, so the box assignment committee's so far into this right now. We're trying to start working towards this change, so that once approved and once everything is implemented, it's not a huge changeover to begin with. So, as Ms. Swisher and I talked about, trying to get this, for what I'm gonna say, our house fires, you know, let's start with our major incidents. Or some of our easier incidents to work with, and not dispatch by the particular station, but let's dispatch what we're, what is needed to get the job done, get a job done safely. And ensure that we have enough people. Um, I don't know that we'll ever have enough people, no matter whether, you know, the county's able to hire a hundred firemen, or we're able to have a hundred volunteers. That will always seem like we always will be shorthanded at some point in time, but at least now, we're going to be dispatching apparatus versus this station. Uh, we're just trying to start this process, get it moving slowly, uh, as, as our NOS, you know, this isn't something, you know, this is up to her in all reality. And she feels like that she's able to start implementing the next phase of this, she's gonna go it out, you know.
So you, you're saying instead of dispatching the fire station, she'll be, her staff will dispatch the apparatuses?
So she'll dispatch a certain number of apparatus versus, versus that station of one, like today, um, something in, you know, in Inwood, it's like, depends on where it is, it may be station twenty, station fifty. For a house fire, um, it may call for three engines, where she may end up having to dispatch twenty, fifty, and sixty, or the air guard, or the road, or whoever, and we get that third engine to try to help. If they need an amount of apparatus, an amount of personnel there.
So you're saying basically, let's use the one that I'm a little bit familiar with, there's a fire on Long Street. You would say that that was, typically that would have been only a dual dispatch, where in, in what I'm hearing today, it could be.
Could be more, it could be more.
Which took all fire departments, I believe.
Yeah, it's a commercial building.
Right.
And there again, when you say that.
Well, basically, when it was on fire.
When you say the commercial side of it, that actually increases, like this building here, you know, um, it would actually increase the number of apparatus that would be going. But, on, on things that may be your fire alarms, you're decreasing some of that stuff, you know, so it's a, it's taken both sides, you know, where we need the help. Or typically you don't need help, you know, obviously fire alarms have been for a reason. I happened to run the call that, uh, Phil Coogers' house called thirty years ago, gave him his a fire alarm, well, it was a true working fire alarm, that, that would cause devastation. So, anytime that they would get additional information, they would change their dispatch to, um, come and see with what is actually needed, yes. So, we're not trying to change the world here, we're just trying to slowly, uh, make this switch over little by little. So that when it does fully implement, it's not chaotic for everybody, them, us, everyone, you know, we're getting used to it little by little.
See, it happened in two phases, this is phase one, um, each of you all approved the BARB software, that'll want to go, that'll go with phase two. So, phase one just starts moving us in that right direction using the protocol, drives through the protocol, based upon the quality. And they're gonna do a lot of work prior to being hired, to go ahead and get that set up and ready, and we went back and forth, we discussed some, some would change, some we agreed with.
Since you got me here.
So, it's, it's been a give and take, um, I've been able to reveal and some doubt, we've been pretty intimate with that paperwork and figure out, uh, what, you know, what I feel comfortable with, uh, the same with them. I'm gonna hope that we're in the right direction and the utilization of the services that, that we have to provide.
You got anything, we do get directly involved in a lot of this. He's been our, can we do this type thing person, well, he's every work he needs, but.
I just can't operate television. The council invested, this council invested the better part of eighty thousand dollars to bring the software in play that creates the environment that they're asking you to do. It is absolutely a, a good thing, it's absolutely good and the technology can help that person at that console tell this person what they may or may not need, so it's just an evolution and, my goodness, I, I think it's a great agreement, they're on the same page. It's awesome to see it happen.
Absolutely, I applaud every time that somebody wants to look at what's going on and find out how we can make it better. How we can do better and, and make more sense, common sense in what we're doing, you know, you hear too many times in conversations that, you know, this is how we've always done it. And just because it worked thirty years ago, and it may have worked well thirty years ago, doesn't mean today it's going to be the best way to handle it, so.
I have to commend all of the, whether, I don't care who it is that's been involved, like the leadership of any organization throughout this county that's been working on this, because, um, there again, there's been a lot to give and a lot to take, there's been a lot of meetings that have been planned for one hour that were free hours that were set around, and I do not agree with this, well, you know. Some of us gotta, some of us gotta accept it, some of us have to work with it, and, but for the most part, everybody's been able to give a good foundation to have this thing, you know, goals here.
Sounds like you've done your job.
I think that we, as collective, we have all done a good job. It's a long process, it is a long process, and even after this, this, uh, uh, box assignment is finalized, it's gonna be a long process to get it, to get it working some person.
And more so, at the end of the day, I think, because I was involved early on, uh, in helping get, get the box assignments established, but, uh, and there's a tremendous amount of work that went around the table, but at the end of the day, I feel that the public will be better served, uh, by this procedural change than what we currently have.
I agree with that. I need a motion to, I want to say this completely correctly, need a motion to approve the, uh, transition to the box assignment dispatch concept.
It's the first step.
The first phase, okay.
Once they're ready to fully implement box assignments, then I'll put them back on the agenda for them to come in. So this is kind of the first step in that evolution.
Right, all right, there, ten motions.
I move.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, any discussion? If not, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, I'd like to take, I think this is a fine time, PJ, um, to recognize everyone on their hard work. Central Dispatch, Gary Wine, your firefighters, your chiefs, the association, most people don't understand what the volunteers firefighters do. I say it all the time, but I can add to it today, of saying, not only are they gonna show up, they put your family before theirs at a fire. But they're also, when they get done, they go back to the firehouse and they make sure that apparatus is cleaned before it goes back to put away. Then they also have to keep their firehouse, or choose to keep their firehouse spotless, and a lot of times do fundraisers. This is all a hundred percent volunteer, and then you have your monthly board meetings, and then you have a monthly association meeting, and you're doing things like this. So, from the outside, if they don't realize, there's a lot of moving parts, like you said, that had to go in place since two thousand nineteen to do this. And many, many of those hours, if not all those hours, are done at a volunteer level, right? So people, I, I just wanna make, make sure that people out there understand, um, that this is, this is something that, that volunteer firefighters in Burke County have done. Free.
Above and beyond their forty hour work week.
Right.
And, and obviously we're incorporating the, the staffing, you know, you're all, the personnel, you know, as I mean, I make comment, uh, including the personnel. And not only, not only the volunteer stations here, you know, now we're to the point where we're including, and we have great working relationships with the city of Martsburg, with the VA Center, uh, with the one sixty seven. We all know tragedy happens, and the tragedy that went to a place a couple, a couple months ago has kind of brought people even more close together. And with a bigger common goal of trying to work together to get more things implemented, I won't say fast, but fast and directed. So, everybody, the meeting that you all attended, you know, like, that's the first time in forever that I've seen all of those different departments. So that, that shows a lot.
Thank you all.
We appreciate you all, thank you all for, uh, considering this, approving this, and, uh, I think it's gonna be a great thing for the county moving forward, like, you know, as we said, catching up, we're catching up. Changing where you were to feed everybody else.
Appreciate you, appreciate your time, thank you. All right, Mr. Wine, you ready?
I used it.
I'm gonna start from the beginning. We're gonna assume that you're going to listen to this, I have no idea. We'll see it up there, but you can just.
We just started up there. So it's a crisp.
Jen wants you to see one more that has a.
So not last the other one, we just watched one of the dispatchers interviews.
We have five total.
There's five.
And, and I've seen all five, they, they really well done, um, Jen and Chad Chipford.
I'm concerned about her delay here, if I could play it's gonna affect this, it's gonna be.
Are you really nervous tonight, Mr. Wine?
I'm Daniel Fernandez, and I've worked here since August, oh, sorry, October last year. I started off in the hospital, I had money, I would say that I had people skills, but I can go a long way, and they'll teach you a lot of what you need to get. As long as you want to be able to help people, you're gonna be able to do it, and you have to be able to want it, you have to be able to want to learn fire calls, home court calls, medical calls, civil calls. It's a little bit of learning, when you're that voice on the other side, and think it really is helping people, exciting, and also knowing that every one of those calls, at least helping out a handful of people.
So where are you gonna put these?
So these will be on the YouTube channel, we could also put them on social media, um, through some of the community sites to do recruitment. Uh, it's, it's interesting, when you put something on YouTube, if you type in nine one one dispatching, our videos will come up as, as being the option. So, or nine one one jobs, or different keywords, this will be one of the options that those people that go onto YouTube to look for something, will be able to, will be able to find and, and watch us, and what our people do.
So, Mr. Wine, it takes a lot of time to kind of make sure that keyword stays fresh, right?
It does, and those of you who have social media, share and reshare and tweet and retweet, that's how it works.
And you'll hear more about that next week.
Yeah.
We have Matt coming in to talk about strategic planning communications, kind of globally, and that's one of the things he's gonna talk about, is the power of social media. And kind of the synergy and how it multiplies, so.
Sure, it's funny that, um, you know, not only is the county wanting to, uh, make a presence on, on that, it could be always in a positive way. But Central Dispatch are doing it, the sheriffs don't want to do it, so, times are changing, it's, 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 I think a lot, a lot of times, we think that the general public knows what everybody does, and they don't, and this is another way of, of trying to make that happen, and I apologize for doing it, and, um.
I think it's gonna be a good tool for us, it's approved, um, shows also our community involvement as well, uh, so every month our dispatchers are, it's sort of a, 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 agency, a county. Uh, we did go children's county society, and the rest.
Are, are these considered PSAs? Not really. Well, that's what I was wondering if we could get PSAs like on cable channels or something.
One of the things that you have recently invested in, in your, in your new day report center, are, are video walls, picture, if you will, a spot in that wall that houses these videos, so people don't see them. Jen has requested the video wall in the center itself, so she can do things like that, so we can begin to get them out and place them all over our campuses, and anyone else that hasn't, they're once approved by you.
You want the monitors out here also?
For sure, we could, once released, once approved, they're available to anybody, anywhere, so if you know someone that has advertisement, hey, any chance you could run that for us one today, they're, they're ready for you.
Well, I, I think one of the things too, that we talk about from the public safety side, whether it's dispatch, fire, EMS, and, or, or law enforcement, is that, you know, having, um, annual events, you know, that. you know, having, um, annual events, you know, that the public and the children come to see to try to recruit that child at a young age to say, hey, I might want to do this, which makes it very difficult for you to do any other time, because no one's allowed in your building for obvious reasons. It makes it very difficult for law enforcement, because they're always in a predicament, or could be in a predicament where they can't and shouldn't have anybody with them. In the same way with fire and EMS, so how do you reach them? You have, you have community events, like you said Jennifer, or we have a community event that's law enforcement, police, EMS, and it's a, it's a, it's a gathering for a, a get together and a picnic, and, and let the, let the community. It could be recruitment, and, and absolutely trying to reach to the younger generation that may be an applicant one day.
Are, are we restricted about putting any video wall or, or, uh, anything in the courthouse? Yeah, because there, we know there's two hundred thousand people go in the courthouse every year.
Forty thousand, forty something thousand, and actually, actually people coming through the front door.
So, population of Berkeley County.
Yeah, I mean, why not, why not look at something like that to be able to help? I mean, that's a pretty inexpensive way to put something up to be able to help, uh, um, like this, you know? Or, or information rotating about the DRC, or, you know, those type of things, that we want to get that information out, why not do that? Why not do that there, or on the wall out here, we talked about it out here before, about having something out here, why not have that here? I mean, there's enormous amount of people coming to this building here.
Alright, um, okay, need a motion to, uh, to move forward with the videos.
So move.
I get, motion rejected, second, any discussion? If not, all fair say aye.
Uh huh.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Again, I want to point out this was all developed in-house, at no cost of the county, a buck and beyond our, our normal budget. We did not use outside sources.
Right, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good work, thanks Jennifer. Secretary of General, Sheriff, uh, thank you Harmon for buzzing presentation two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two.
As Sheriff Harmon comes forward, I just want to point out real quickly, there was a, there's a little bit of a change in your typical spreadsheet that I've given you. The spreadsheet represents seven months' worth of expenses, so the expenses, um, are reflective as of the end of, of January. Also, for the personnel request, um, for next year, um, excluding the additional positions that have not been approved, um, Department seven hundred now reflects the sixty-two uniform positions that the council previously changed. It's seven oh one has no operating expenses in it, but it does reflect the eleven full-time, um, civilian positions. So those changes have been made, um, you did authorize some additional positions, um, a part-time to full-time, and two additional full-time positions. They're also reflected in seven oh one, so that's the most current, um, that's the most current information I can give you. Um, at the bottom of your spreadsheet for seven oh one, um, it does reflect, um, the, the positions, um, at the very bottom. Total, thank you everybody, total personnel requests, um, the ones that you've already approved are highlighted in red. Um, then below you have the total cost of all personnel, less the personnel requests that have already been placed in Budget seven oh one, and then it has your remaining personnel requests, so you can see total request with benefits for eight twenty-seven, three twenty-nine. You've approved one eleven, five seventy-six, so personnel request outstanding for seven hundred is seven fifteen, seven fifty-two. So, I'm a little bit different, because the council's already acted on some of the requests. Sorry Sheriff.
No, you're, you're good.
Alright Sheriff, the floor is yours.
Well, I, I want to thank you all again for, for having me, and, uh, bear with me, this is my, my first stab at it, but we got a, a, a couple presentations, but, uh, I'll be quick about it.
We'll be soft on it.
We'll be, huh?
We'll be soft on it.
I appreciate that, especially Doug.
Yeah, Dan says I'm getting soft to my own age.
You can see, we'll, we'll start here in the four oh four line item two fourteen in regards to tax office travel, and if, if this is, if I go over anything, that, that is was fairly just streamlined, just stop me and we'll move on, but, uh, I requested an increase of just two hundred dollars, uh, for the travel expenses for, uh, the tax office in that line item.
The increase in four oh four is all reflective of the five percent increase that the council approved, effective dispatch.
Other than that, that's.
Other than the two hundred dollars.
Other than that, that's it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Alright, we might have to argue about the two hundred dollars, aren't we? Alright.
Do you really notice that? Um, the four oh nine line item two twenty, the tax office advertising and legal qualifications, um, uh, the request submit for additional one hundred and six thousand two hundred dollars to increase to cover, uh, the part of legal advertisements. Now, as I looked at this historically, the office would come in, uh, my chief, uh, tax deputy would come in and request as they went. Um, I, I just didn't, uh, I don't know the reasons behind that, that's fine, if that's the procedure that still wants to be pursued. Uh, the reason why I requested, requested this is because every time they do a publication, it is, it is in the seventies range each time they do it.
Hopefully that might change this year.
Yes, yes. Uh, I am in hopes though, that, that instead of coming here and, and, uh, inundating you, requests, or, or taking up your time, is that we could possibly get this increase so, so due to the historical data that, that shows that they do spend this amount of money in, in their publications. So, this is more just to streamline that process, is the only reason for this request.
But, but even, even with that said Sheriff, um, and, uh, I, I think thi- this actually started stemming from, um, when we had the spike, uh, spike, I'm sorry, in the recession, and there was a lot of foreclosures, and, and then the advertising started going up because of taxes, and all that stuff being, being delayed because of the recession, uh, and not getting paid. And then we kind of thought as the economy would, would actually, uh, rebound, that that should go down. And it hasn't went down as much as we thought it would, so that was the whole reasoning behind that, I think that we can do probably a better job, um, than try to get it a little closer. But I think there's still going to be times when, and, and we've always been good to our word, that hey, if it goes over, just come see us, we'll make a hole. And we've already done that this year.
That's where I'm standing this.
Right, right.
Well, I, and it, and it may very well make very good sense this year, if the bill's introduced, tactically change, um, how this is done, because then, then that need might not be there for that.
And, and, and I guess, correct me wrong, Mr. Davis, uh, and Sheriff is, is, you know, this is a reimbursable item, you know, it, it, it being reimbursed.
It is, um, when we talk about revenues next week, um, there is, we do track, um, the, the advertising expenses, um, any penalties, things like that from, um, that are incurred due to properties that are sold due to taxes, that we can track those separately.
Even though it's re- reimbursed, it's money that we have to front.
Correct.
Right, so, um, alright Sheriff, I'm sorry.
Uh, I do, I do want to make, um, just a, a, I do want to cover, um, a, a salary increase within four oh nine that I did not specifically request. And I don't know what the intentions of the council are in regards to increases, I understand that there have been increases, but the increases that I asked from the civilian staff at the sheriff's office, I was hoping that the council would consider the same increase for the tax office. Uh, that is on me, I forgot, uh, to submit that along with the personnel, uh, salary increases, but I just didn't, I didn't want to make that footnote.
Yeah, that's why we're here today, and, um, I think, well, I, I don't think I'd know, um, Sheriff, like you stated, we, we actually came a long ways in the last five years, if not maybe six years of, of, of getting our employees caught up. Um, and our goal is to maintain, um, um, not only with the public safety, but all employees. And, um, the, the good thing is we're in a, in a good economy, the bad thing is we're in a good economy, you know? And it's, it's, you gotta keep pace, and we, I think we've done, uh, we've worked on that harder in the last six years than we ever have. But, thank you.
And I, and I've seen, I just, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, my personnel there at the tax office, and there's some, there's some, uh, some heart-wrenching issues with, uh, with keeping food on the table and stuff like that, so it was, uh, I wanted to make sure I made that point here today, just to, to ask the council's consideration for that. So there's, I appreciate any consideration.
Okay. You also have Department Supplies and Materials, line item three forty-one, that, um, is, uh, asking for a significant increase.
Twenty, thirty thousand. One nine eight eight.
Right here, I got it, thank you sir. Yes sir, item, line item three three one, tax office supplies and materials, this is in conjunction with, uh, the new printers and toner cartridges, um, cover the costs of those. Um, I asked for an increase of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Uh, Gary might be able to elaborate on that a little bit more, from my understanding, due to the movements of all these printers, the upkeep.
No, no, we're, we're fine, we're fine, we'll, we'll get with Mr. Wine on that, and, uh, see, see what can be done, and, and I'll get right to you on that.
Alright. I believe we're at seven hundred, line item one oh three. And I believe Mr. Davis has already covered the movement, uh, of the civilians moved to the county.
And I did send you the new, the new roster, just to show that we did get that.
I'm asking, uh, for an increase of a hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for law enforcement salaries. Again, that is for a new deputy position, but I can assure you, after speaking with Ms. Gilliam's, and the grant opportunities that are out there, we've covered in detail the cost grant, uh, I foresee no issue whatsoever with being successful with that grant.
It's at a five percent now?
It's a twenty-five percent match.
Okay.
And it's a three-year period.
And it's twenty-five percent each year? I, I don't need the details, but I mean, okay.
Because if I told you so, I know it's a twenty-five percent match, I think that's.
Typically a three-year. Four, three or four-year phase in, and it's similar to the safer grant, where it picks up seventy-five, we pick up twenty-five, and then it's, um, then we pick up a little bit more than after the end of the grant period, we have to commit to fully funding those, those positions.
Right, that funds salary and retirement. Uh, but look, going through the boxes that need to be checked on programs that exist, which I'll get into, I'll touch on lightly here. Um, I could tell you that Tom and I, in the first forty-five days, have pretty much hit all the requirements that are needed for that, for that grant, so we're, we're setting pretty, pretty good for that. We've already filled three vacancies as of Jan- January first, with Mr. Welkum, Derek Walker, Joshua Northbrand. We have, uh, another applicant that is pulling through the psychological evaluation, or, I'm sorry, the medical and psychological evaluation, we have expedited these processes, and, uh, so we don't foresee any reason why she wouldn't pass either. So, um, I am going, I do plan on going to Charleston and talking about an expedited process for pre-certified officers.
Hopefully they do that with the troopers as well.
Yes, yes, and then I will have conversations.
And, and I, I don't want to say that Sheriff, because there, I, if I was a man in uniform, or a woman in uniform, in some of the, some of the country, I'd be looking to go to a place that would respect you. You know what I mean? And I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean, it, you know, we have good and bad everywhere, but, but there's no reason to punish the good.
No.
You know what I mean?
The, if you think about the pre-certified process that we need to implement here, and the monies that it will save, not only wearing terror vehicles, the guys traveling back and forth to the academy, the fifteen hundred dollar fee that goes towards the academy, and the lengthy process it takes to train a new hire, that you could look at pretty much up to a year after hire date, before they're effectively on the work. Whereas if the civil service agrees to an, uh, a, an abbreviated process, I'll use former trooper Walker as an example, he had to go through the entire civil service process, uh, background check, psychological, uh, polygraph, med exam, physical fitness, the written exam. What I'm talking about is a med exam and a physical fitness test, and that's it. And, and each case is handled differently, depending on the years or certain years that you, that you have, you have been absent. If it's a lateral transfer only, then it's a medical exam and a physical fitness test. If you've been out for two or more years, then we go a step further with the background and stuff, it's an abbreviated background. Regardless, you're saving money in the man-hours that go into investigating, doing the investigation with the background, and the tests that need to be administered and part of that process. So what I'm asking for the civil service to do in Charleston is to, uh, allow us to do this abbreviated process. We've already looked into shortening things like the promotional test to make it easier with, uh, online processes. Civil Service has agreed to take a look at that, sent that down to Charleston. Uh, so we're working on the promotional side of that, which is helping the morale of the department. When we're looking at the pre-certified officers, then the civil service has, uh, at, at least in this county, has agreed to sit down and discuss that abbreviated process. So we have buy-in from here in this county, I just need to take it to Charleston, but I need the council to consider this. When you ask, when you garner that experience from a pre-certified officer, what do they bring into the table? Are they bringing two years of experience, or are they bringing four years of experience, or are they bringing nine plus years of experience? Because that is where we actually benefit the most, how much road experience do they have? When I was a state police, when I was a state trooper, I, I did multiple things, I did future recovery task force, I was on crime scene response team, I was on their SRT team, and I was the marijuana eradication officer for the entire Eastern Panhandle. That's on top of doing, uh, the standard trooper duties. Uh, I didn't get paid no extra for that, but what, what would have happened if I would have left there and came over to the sheriff's office? What do they have to offer me? Some people are going to sign on bonuses and all that, I don't necessarily agree with the, the bonus side of things as much as I believe in a, a experience level starting point in regards to, do we pay them at graduate, uh, get academy graduate levels, which is forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for them? That's a deputy level one, or do we start them at two years of experience at a deputy level two at forty-four, seven fifty-six? If they bring two years, if they bring more than two years, and in between two and four years, they start at forty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-three. And if they bring anything over four years, they, they start at forty-nine, five thirty-one. This is my suggestion that I would like the council to consider.
I think it's a great request Sheriff, I, I don't know anything, I would, I would probably say about that would be, actually, we'll get together and talk about it. Um, is, I'd like to think that they would still have, be paid less than the person that's. less than the person that's been with the department for those period of time during probation time. So they can get, um, accustomed to the way that you want the sheriff's department to be ran. And then a year later, they could get up to that status or something like that.
And I, and I think, I was thinking on the same, same level, but I don't know that if you did that, you would go year for year and put them in the same spot, you know? Maybe, maybe, you know, and, and just you, you know, five years, you know? Maybe you look at, you know, a portion of the five years level or, or that, um, you know, in, um, in the experiences that they have.
It could be something as simple as being one class under. Have you been here? If you, if, if your classification would be, um, up to two-year service and then, and then two to, to five, and then five to, let's say, eight. And somebody came in with five to eight years' experience, they'd actually start out the first year with the class under that, and then the following year could be promoted.
And maybe with this new financial system, we can do something like that. But just remember, classification system with the sheriff, the classification with, with the firefighters, the classification system with nine-one-one, classification system with court security. We're all, we're tracking all that manually right now. Um, and every once in a while, someone will slip through the cracks that Eddie will tell you. Your firefighter will come and say, you know, you, I reached this anniversary benchmark six months ago, and you give it to me. Well, yeah, you're right, because we're tracking more than half of our workforce manually. So when you throw, when you throw something different like that in there, then that's, I mean, I'm not saying that it's not a good idea.
It's tough to follow.
It's tough, it's tough to follow.
No, but I, I totally get what he's saying because.
Oh, I, I'm not disagreeing with him.
If we just put an ad out there to hire somebody, we have a range and we look at their qualifications to see where they fit in that range. And that's kind of the same thing that he's talking about is, is to be able to, you know, hire somebody with experience and, and give them more than a starting. And I think it makes total sense. And it would obviously make it, um, be more apt to, uh, to get those type of people to make that move.
But that, that could even be, it could be a game changer for you, but it also could be a game changer for Central Dispatch, like crazy.
I, I like the, the thought process, the, the concept of it. The only thing I would caution you is, uh, watch, watch the morale of you guys that have been there. You don't bring somebody and place them above them, because then you have problems. But that's, that's for you to figure out, but I'm just saying, just be careful.
Okay.
Well, I could, I could see a difficulty in our, our side too. Because if we say, we're gonna authorize, you know, a, a new officer, where do, where do we budget that?
Right.
You know? So that, that would, that would add another, uh, a level of work on that. You know, we'd have to figure out how to be able to do that and figure that in.
And if the sheriff and the council collectively decides that we want something like it, it's like everything else. I'll go to Gary and say, hey, can you make this work?
I'm gonna pick on him, I said, wow.
As long as it's not a TV, you still got a black screen.
Yeah.
But that's perfect.
But we will fi, we will fi, we'd figure out a way to make them. We'd figure out a way.
But it makes sense, it makes sense.
That's the concept that we're gonna look forward on. And, and I look forward to just additional discussions on how to polish that, make that better. But we feel we definitely need, they're, they're standing at our front door and we need to do something as far as making the draft.
Well, and, I mean, in the private sector, that's how it's done every day.
Absolutely.
You know, you don't, you don't pay, you don't pay a tradesperson because he wants to come to, to any of our businesses, starting out at the bottom when they have twenty years' experience. Don't work. And that's what's, you know, that's what you're asking for, I believe.
I need just more. Some of the hesitancy in the past has been, as you know, we've been through the civil service, our civil service commission and previous sheriffs have been through litigation where employees did not think that they were treated fairly for purposes of salary and promotion. They took us to where we lost. So, you know, I think the point is well taken. You know, how's this going to affect current employees? Do they feel that somehow they've been wrong? So.
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of things. And I respect, uh, Mr. Gokener's thought process because it could be an issue, but it's always an issue.
It is.
Yeah, sort of like, it's sort of, you know, it's, it's no different when we advertise for a position and somebody in-house thought they should, should have deserved to get it. I'm sorry, you weren't the best qualified person that we were looking for. And, and, and so, but there is a lot of, a lot of things you gotta look at. And, and it's our job to make sure we do that.
I could give you a little, just another, something to kind of digest here a little bit in regards to the corporate position. That's literally at fifty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars. Now, you take a, a new hire and you send them down to the academy and they, and we've hired them and they failed the PT test, they come back. And now, I believe there's an academy going on right now in March. And then there's another one that's suspected to start in the fall. So if they go down in March, they fail the PT test, they come back, they're sitting in our seat, we're paying them. Here you go, October-ish, we're going back down there. Now they go through the sixteen-week program. Technically, that they'll have a year in by the time we get them back, essentially. And then they'll have another year on the road. Well, that's one year's of experience, and then they can test for corporate. And make fifty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars. Uh, for a deputy that has one year's of experience. And that's a supervisory, technically your first-level supervisor rank structure. We're looking at doing a deputy first class and split that. Uh, that's something we're looking at. It's not something I'm asking that you consider right now. We're still kind of looking at that. But when we talk about bringing people in that corner that have the experience and starting them out at forty-nine five forty-one, then you're giving practically all those years of experience and someone that would have to be literally engraved for two years before they are allowed to test out. So they have to be, you know, they'll, they'll be at the department for two years before they can even test for corporate.
With council, remember when we did the current pay scale and we worked with Deputy Sheriff's Association, we, we, we actually wanted to go to a deputy first class. And the civil service commission pushed back and said, there's not provision in the code that will allow that. So that's why, that's why we ended up going with a deputy one, a deputy two, and a deputy three, because we couldn't do it in the F C.
Okay, Sheriff.
And that's what I was just getting ready to say. I mean, we, we were talking about some of the litigation problems that we had. Some of that was, uh, it's already mediated because of the time of service and, uh, and rank structures that we put together to help that situation out.
So now the five vacancies, we got Mr. Welkum, Mr. Walker, Mr. Northcraft, potentially Ms. McNeil, and two vacant positions. I'm playing them through as quickly. Um, so we're moving along pretty well with, with filling those vacancies. And then, of course, part of the reason we're in the COPS grant was that we weren't fully staffed. So I don't foresee that to be an issue. Uh, we're moving along to seven hundred, line item one oh eight. This is probably the one that hit you in the face quite a bit. And I just want to kind of dissect this and, uh, going through it. The original two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and seventy-three appeared to not accommodate the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one expenses, um, for various reasons. But my requested increase of three hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred dollars is not only to cover the, the shortfall. And I believe there was pay raises in overtime that encompassed the pay raise. That might not have been, uh, could have studied the, the final figures. But, um, my requested increase has to deal with historical callouts and usage of special operations teams. And as I break this down, we went with, let's say, for example, the SRT team, who's a nine-member team and, uh, an average of four hours worth of overtime four times per month, um, came to sixty-six thousand forty-five dollars. I can assure you, I can tell you, and I can, I'll be happy to brag about them, our SRT team is fully operational and they have been used four times in the past forty-five days and nothing they have in the past twelve months. And they've received the necessary training to be able to reduce liability at risk of, of any, uh, injury or, or, or liability to the department. So we're investing in them, but also they're being used. They're also being used by the task force, which is an OCDEF reimbursable overtime usage. Uh, we have, so, so that, though this says sixty-six thousand forty-five dollars, um, that is if OCDEF goes away and we had to take on that burden. Um, I don't foresee that happening. This is just more of a projected figure for you that if that went away and OCDEF does not exist through the task force, that, uh, any non-reimbursable overtime happens would be what it looks like. For the K nine, we are actually sitting really, really well with the K nine, uh, team. We have two. We are getting ready to have a third. We have an organization who is donating the training, the certification, and the dog. We take nothing other than the person. And, uh, with that said, we've done an internal review of those interested in that position. We have a person that's interested in that position. Um, but you're talking about the K, that with our initiatives out there, the extended use of the K nine, uh, members, uh, we averaged a three and a half hours per week, um, usage in overtime for that. And again, we're going off of historical calls there that came to nineteen thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. Now, the biggest one that you're not, probably not familiar with is the accelerated criminal enforcement team, which. I'll get to the numbers here in a second. Since January first of this year, we've made forty-seven arrests stemming from traffic stops and answering nine-one-one calls. Cash seized for actual forfeiture money, twenty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars. Vehicles seized, two. Marijuana seized, thirty-six point five ounces. Heroin seized, seventeen grams. Crack cocaine, thirty-eight grams. Cocaine powder, seven grams. PCP, ten grams. Molly, which is a synthetic drug, a hundred and twenty-one grams. And that is a trend in this area. Uh, that Molly ranks right up there with boot, which is a methamphetamine, um, methamphetamine, Molly type of, uh, drug that we're gonna see a lot more of as well. It's coming into the area, it's already here. Um, so it's, it's right up there with the Molly. The fentanyl, ten grams. The firearms, four. The trends that we've identified through the accelerated criminal enforcement team is again the boot and the Molly and what's called Scrabble, which is, uh, uh, heroin, um, in capsules with fentanyl, uh, that's being transported through the county. Interdiction on eighty-one has increased with K nine usage, which is the need for the third member. We're utilizing public information, working together with the community. And the ACE team is literally the swift response to the community's reporting. They have, I, I don't have it working down for you, but I can tell you that at least half of all these numbers that I'm reporting to you came from the citizens. We, we corroborate the information that they have. We'll conduct surveillance, we will conduct traffic stops. And we're talking within a matter of two weeks, they're addressing this problem. They are not a task force. We are not taking them off the road. We will minimize and, and reduce their calls as far as nine-one-one calls. They might not be going to your destruction of property or your, 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 uh, there's no such thing as a simple traffic accident, but your, your standard traffic accidents, uh, they will be going to drug calls. And they will be voluntarily taking nine-one-one calls. So they will be on the road, they will be visible, and they, they are, uh, operating as a four-man team at this point. So you see them on the road, this is, these are the things that they're doing. And I think the investment into the ACE team on the front end is the reason why I'm asking for sixty thousand six hundred and seven seventy, sixty-six seventy-four with four members, eight hours per week. I think that that will be drastically reduced by next year's time because we're just basically taking the head off of the snake right now in regards to drug interdiction. And you can see the results so far in as low as forty-five days of, of what we were able to accomplish. Imagine twelve months of that. All I'm asking is for the overtime, uh, requested amount for this team specifically so we can address the problem on the front end so we can lessen it, uh, down the road. We want to be ahead of it and not always have to play catch-up. And I'm afraid at this point, we, we are playing catch-up right now. Uh, but we are getting the numbers to substantiate this team. Asking for that amount for this team specifically.
So let me ask you a question. Um, so if a lot of this stuff is being, um, confiscated and be create a catches is something that would be forfeiture and vehicles and any property, this could be, um, as you said, on the surface it's sixty thousand dollars, but really, you know, when you dig down into it, it won't be sixty thousand dollars. Right? There's, you know, the forfeiture money and, and everything else.
Yeah, so when you, when you talk about the forfeiture money, as long as it's spent in drug interdiction, then we're good. That drug interdiction can be training, be equipment, um, or any other, uh, services that, that, um, for example, Randy Lilly got a grant that purchased a ninety-five thousand dollar machine that actually tests translucent surfaces like bottles and baggies and stuff. Whereas we cannot touch fentanyl, we can't process fentanyl. We might suspect that it's fentanyl. We can't determine if it is unless we send it. This machine actually identifies it without putting your hands on it. Um, so when we look at grant, additional grant funding and whatnot. So this, the, the sixty thousand dollar investment that I'm asking for, will, within and by itself, uh, pay dividends because I won't have to spend any actual money, uh, from the budget in regards to training because I can, I can train most of my department with the forfeiture money. I also understand seized weapons. I'm looking into different, uh, FFL programs for that. I understand the, through the state treasurer's office, that I, if we establish a relationship with them, then we can, we can work out a, a deal where the guns go to an FFL and then we get a, a reimbursable amount for ammunition and for the purchase of department weapons. So there is a turnaround with the weapons seized as well. So we're looking at that.
But this, this is, if, if it was funded, this is something that would be, I know you're saying, taking the head off the snake, but unfortunately, it seems like, you know, when one snake leaves, another snake comes in. Um, and, you know, on this, and I would also look at the forfeiture money of being something that where, you know, one of the things we always look at, Clint's heard us say this many, many times, Hogwin is, is, you know, um, I mean, I could see where, let me say it this way, I can see where this program could be semi-self-sustainable, but this is.
Just so you understand, forfeiture money does not go back to the general fund.
I know, I know.
Not after the prosecuting attorney's office gets their power.
Right.
That forfeiture money is at the sole discretion of sheriff. It's a little different than like some of our grant programs where we front-funded and get reimbursed. You're front-funding it and, and I know the sheriff is good to his word and he's saying, I'll use some of that forfeiture money to reduce some of my general funded expenditures for training and things like that. But future sheriffs may not feel that way.
That's why I'm having this conversation.
So, so can it, can, so it can be used for payroll?
No.
It can't, if he doesn't, if he chooses to, it can't be used for payroll? I mean, if it goes into a fund, if it goes into a fund and he wanted to use it, use that fund to pay for overtime, he couldn't transfer that money into the general. he couldn't transfer that money into the general budget to me?
Well, I mean, we could, I guess we could, yes, I guess we could bill him for it or he could agree to reimburse the county for it.
Right, and that's, that's my point.
It falls under, under the general guidelines for the use of that. We've never had a sheriff that has offered to do that, you know?
I understand, but if you put, if you put a hundred thousand dollars in a fund to pay for overtime for certain type of thing and, and pay for it and then there was agreement to reimburse as, as they acquired funds or auctioned off vehicles or those types of things.
So, you're almost saying like a line of credit?
Yes.
You know, and, and
And I would have no problem doing that whatsoever. Like I said, I perceive, just like the president said, I can see a reduction in my request down the road simply because of this team and the initial investment on the front end. As the forfeiture grows, which is, well, I have no problem reinvesting it elsewhere.
And I'm just, I'm just thinking aloud, you know what I mean?
This is what we call bridge money.
Right, exactly.
And I'm thinking so much, I'm going to get myself in trouble on this one. But, and I'm embarrassed to say it, but I have to, you know, it's kind of like one of the things you want to tell somebody something and then you say, "Ah, well, yeah, I have to now," you know? But even with the confiscation of marijuana today with it being legal for
That's not
Why not? If you're going to do, if you're going to do everything else.
What are you going to sell it back to the medical pharmacy so they can clarify? Yeah.
I mean, it's crazy.
That's not going to follow what his goal is.
Well, but, but, but Nor did that bill help him out or anybody else out.
I understand.
But, you know?
I remember we were running over the issue, I mean, it's, I completely foresee it, recreational being legalized. It's happening all the way around us. Medical marijuana pilot programs are rolling right now. So, my, my, my main focus, of course, if it's illegal, it's illegal and we'll continue to do such. But, you know, the boot, the Molly, the synthetics that are coming in, that's, that's the most dangerous fentanyl. That's not slowing down, so like you said, one's going to replace the other, so.
You watch, I'm embarrassed to say what I said, but you watch, it's going to, on these days, it's probably going to be perfectly
Somebody's going to
Absolutely, there's no, what's the difference? You got growers are buying from, what's the difference?
I can see it. Now, keep in mind also that everything that I'm requesting regards to overtime, when it comes to the accelerated criminal enforcement team, the K-9, the SRT, if it is a OCF drug task force, OCF-sponsored case, then that overtime is reimbursed and the ACE team is included within that. Yes, if it's a search, whether it's a, it's an actual deployment where we're making arrests on a residence or anything like that, it's completely reimbursed. I believe it's a thirty-day term. Criminal investigation division, just like the Laddie shooting, we looked historically, what are the call-outs for the criminal investigation division where you're bringing out at a minimum of three members? They average about two-hundred-and-eighty-eight hours per year. And that's why I've asked for the twelve thousand six hundred ninety-three dollar overtime increase for that. School resource officers, of course, you got your sporting events. We have three members of those averaging ninety-six hours per year on the sporting events, which is three thousand two hundred and seventy-six. So, the total above is one hundred and sixty-two thousand ninety-nine dollars. And the mental hygiene trips, of course, I know that that's being worked on down south and I'm going to help piggyback that when I go down next week in regards to the number. The numbers being increased in regards to our hygiene trips. I am working and looking at additional overtime reimbursement type of contractual agreement with, between Mr. Delgotti and Gage's store here at the, in Martinsburg. They are the number one retail store as far as Gage corporate in the tri-state area. They have come to us and asked for us for help. They want to reach a mutual agreement with the sheriff's office where we can go in and actually do some good reverse the merchandise theft that's going on there, literally cartloads have been thrown in the trunks. You've got drug deals going on in the bathrooms, you've got overdoses going on in the parking lots, a lot of deaths. You've got traffic accidents in the parking lot if people are driving impaired, they're going to be dealing with drugs. The list is long with the management there, I've met with them, and they're primed for help. So, we're going to see if we can help. So, there's another avenue, I just wanted to bring that up. As far as line item two fourteen, under seven hundred, the law enforcement travel, I'm not asking for any increase there. Law enforcement maintenance and repair of equipment. I've requested for eight thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars increase to cover contracts. Forty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars in Axon Enterprise, that's a TASER contract that we need to renew. And keep up on, now, I did through my walkthrough and discussions with the task force, there is a four thousand six hundred and thirteen dollar subscription that we were paying for that I had saw that we do not need to pay for any longer. So, that is a, that is a reduction that I feel that we saved in regards to department because of what that capability gave us, it's called Casper. I won't go into too much detail, but it involves phones. But we can get that service without paying that subscription. That's as simple as I can say it. So, we no longer need to do that, so we reduce that cost. The cell phone service that we do, I wouldn't say on a more generic level, but a different level, they're at the department that we don't get the ability of, it's called Cell Bright, and that's a four thousand three hundred dollar service that we need to keep. It's a, it's a cell phone service that we utilize. Sergeant Snyder did a good job for us to do that. Line item two eighteen, postage, I simply requested from fifteen hundred to two thousand on that one. Obviously, for the increase in what we're going to be putting out there for is literatures and stuff. On relations, I've asked for two thousand on that. This will be, for a total of three thousand. Now, this will be partly utilized by the public relations specialists to utilize on the department's behalf to get that community engagement that we're looking for.
Let's go back to some of your reading, Sheriff, I appreciate all this, everything that you've done here. Huge amount of information and but the ratio of a police officer, one to two-point-six officers per thousand population. Naturally, here in Berkeley County, that could include three different departments. The sheriff department, the city police, and the state police. Would that not be a fair statement?
Try to find it.
Yeah, when I read it, it's the third page.
Actually, even in some of the statistics that I've read, it includes court security and animal control.
I'm sorry, it's the fourth, fourth page. So, my only question, because I'm going to read everything that you give me.
Yes, sir.
That's my goal. The, it sounds to me like a fair way to evaluate that would be a minimum of one officer per thousand people.
Yes.
Including all departments. So, meaning that the city of Martin, now, here's what I would say, the city of Martinsburg got, what, forty-some police officers for seventeen thousand people, right? So, you can't say that forty officers, actually, they would only need seventeen per thousand, right? So, you can't say there's twenty-three extra officers. So, what you do, you take the population of city of Martinsburg out of the evaluation or the calculations and say, "Okay, we have a hundred and three thousand people in the county." So, a hundred and three means that we would need a hundred and three officers to, at the bare bone minimum, to do that. Now, then the next thing I would say is, okay, well, how many state police troopers should we have at our dispatch? Or at this department, which I'm thinking is thirty-some, which would roll that back to now possibly seventy deputies. Am I thinking right on that, or?
No, you are. I mean, in two thousand and six, when I was in the state police, their requirement to Martinsburg was twenty-one. We never had that, the most we have is eighteen.
And what year was that?
Two thousand and six.
Okay.
Obviously, we would be more now, but I truly don't think that they're appreciating the growth of this county and the issues that arise out of this county just simply because we're geographically located in the tri-state area. And I'm hoping to communicate that down there with the secret agent next week. But you are thinking correctly. I don't think it would be, I'm approaching this more at a step request in regards to what I put here as a four, five, and a seven. I know that nowhere sniffs the actual amount that we need, but it does give me to that eighty-three, eighty-four ideal mark by the end of mine, at least first, hopefully, four-year term. And my, so with that number in mind, my focus is, how do I make the individual deputy more efficient? Where we're actually dealing with multiple things at the same time? Whether that be community policing, criminal investigation, where we're actually solving things more quickly, more efficiently, we're reducing crime across the board. That's another selling point for the ACE team because, again, I'll use Flint, Michigan as an example when they incorporated their SRT team, which is the same concept. They took their name off the most dangerous city list in the nation in the first nine months of doing that. So, they reduce crime across the board.
And that's what, that's a very important point because I was going to ask you some background on that because, you know, this council is very wise to think that you don't only look at what it costs on the surface, but you really look at the overall costs and savings by what you do, right? And you got to think, for example, you know, if you continue to do what you're doing, which I know you will in your, your department, maybe the drug dealer will think twice before they come into Berkeley County. Maybe the person that thinks it's okay to do what they do will look over their shoulder now, which in return will, will save us on court costs, it saves us on regional jail costs, it saves us everywhere else. And in reality, you may spend another half a million dollars, but it's going to save you seven hundred thousand dollars. So, it's indirect savings is, is what, you know, I wonder how other agencies, other jurisdictions see, and it's all about management too, how well do they manage what they implement?
Right, and I don't know if you've traveled through, what is it, Somerville, West Virginia? You have to literally go that thirty-five miles an hour speed limit because they'll pull you over for it. And they are religious about doing that.
Mortonville's another good spot too. Mortonville too.
Yeah, so whether they do, if I'm in a hurry or something like that, not telling on myself, but I'll find a way around it, I'll go another route because I know for a fact that that would actually slow me down. Regardless, it's, it's, you're correct. They'll, Berkeley County is serious about solving the drug problem and we're not going to let up. And we, I have no problems on social media or otherwise telling those that want to profit from that poison that we plan on continuing to hit this hard in some form or fashion. It's, I don't have a problem at all. And I think that that message continues to be relayed with the ACE team and the task force direction that they might find a way around us, but they won't go through us, so.
Can I ask you where you, where you got your statistic for the one in a thousand?
You have the RAND Corporation, R-A-N-D. They are a governmental, I would say, they assist in a lot of, if you look at their site, they have a lot of community policing programs, law enforcement safety programs, and statistics in their think tank for organization, federal organizations like the state department, we use them quite a bit where we do terrorism awareness or state department classes as well as other governmental employees that I used to train and BSR train.
The reason I'm asking is I've, I've done a lot of research on the amount in the past when, when we've talked about needs of deputies and those type of things, and I've seen it all over the board. I've seen it, I think most of the ones that I've seen were between seven and nine per thousand. And some of those, like I said a minute ago, some of those included court security, they included animal control, any uniformed, any uniformed
Respondent. Any uniformed responder.
Yeah, yeah.
The RAND Corporation was the one that I felt most trusted in, in utilizing. Like you said, you go, you'll find two-point-six, you'll find different numbers. I don't, I can't remember ever seeing that at a seven, but again, you do run into where they include animal control as, as law enforcement, whereas statistically, they're not a mistake and we can't necessarily include them because they're, you know, the fact that they're not sworn law enforcement.
Yeah, and I was talking point seven and point nine.
I was going to say.
I've seen it, I've seen it. I've seen it. Two-point-six, one-point-three.
Right.
The RAND Corporation has stayed pretty consistent with their numbers and they have some pretty good research.
Now, give me something to do in my spare time.
Thank you. I guess we're moving to line item two twenty-three, under seven hundred, law enforcement special services. This would include and encompass polygraphs, physicals, and psychological evaluations. Last allotment was ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-one. I'm asking for fifteen thousand. For the increase to facilitate the public relations person or videographer request because just like Jennifer had put on earlier, we're planning on doing a recruitment day. We're planning on doing department videos. I have an individual who has won very, a pretty good amount of Emmy awards for the heroin videos that he had done in Baltimore. A very good person, and I've seen the work that he does, but obviously, he doesn't do it for free. So, I'd like to take our PRO and introduce her to come and make that relationship occur and then, of course, you know, come out and produce a very good quality video for the department. So, I understand that, that I feel that there's been some decrease in this as well. The only reason why I'm only requesting fifteen thousand is I'm not using outsourced attorneys. I very much appreciate the availability of Mr. Delgotti. And, you know, come to find out that Sheriff's Association actually provides additional legal services through our subscription that we pay. And so, I have no intentions on outsourcing any of those expensive services into our system. Court costs and damages for law enforcement, line item two twenty-nine. I've asked for eight thousand last time with the language too. I understand that it's a six thousand dollar increase request, but I think we all agree that the atmosphere across the nation has changed a little and I'd rather be prepared for anything down the road rather than unprepared. So, if you could consider that request, I sure do appreciate that. Line item two thirty, contracted services. I requested two thousand. That would be the Iron Mountain or shred, paper shred services and Berkeley Club beverage or water services contracts that we have. Line item two twenty-three, the investigation experience Line item two-twenty-three, the investigation expense, I didn't request any additional there. Line item three-forty-one, law enforcement supplies and materials. This is a big one for me. Obviously, there is a consistent sustainment allotment of ammunition that we need to maintain that encompasses training and duty. That was seventy-two thousand dollars, and that's going off of historical bids from last time, and there was no bid award last year. And of course, the training has been sort of shelved, and we're planning to catch up with the training, too.
Yeah, I was thinking that, too. I was thinking that there was no bid that went out for ammunition last year. So you are confirming what I thought.
Yeah, there's, there's a significant wait time for ammo that's across the board. Lame it on COVID, what have you, it's just, it is what it is. But we are, I just had a meeting with the Training Center this morning, Shadow Hawk, and, you know, whether they have an allotment that we can use for training, so there will be some areas where we don't necessarily have to provide, but we might have to pay for the usage of our ammo. So it's not like I have to have this allotment on hand, so to speak. So if for whatever reason, we fall slightly short of that, I think we'll be okay. But seventy-two thousand is a standard allotment for sustaining ammunition for the department. Forty-three thousand in gas masks and filters, I know that this was asked for in the past. Again, my justification for that would be just look at the national climate and what's going on across the nation, and we don't have these things. And I would very much love to have this equipment if it's, if the council agrees to that, forty-three Dry suits, I can tell you that the dive team, which, I mean, dry suits could be encompassed within the DHS grant, the DHS grant that I talked with Mr. Mrs. Gilliams yesterday about, that equipment such as these dry suits, we're dealing with twenty-six, twenty-five-year-old dry suits that are literally falling apart at the seams, and then once that happens, now our teams can't drive, now you got hypothermia setting in, and so we've asked for nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars to get those dry suits. Those would, that would be two dry suits. I was correct, the suits that they currently have are twenty-five years old. They have no cold water or contaminated water recovery suits. The dive team has nine divers, and they've made do for four dry suits with those nine We're only requesting two, because we understand that they're extremely expensive. And we'll try to obtain the remaining dry suits through grants, as I mentioned earlier, with the DHS grant, because they got to invest twenty-five percent right off the top with those grants that are completely viable purchase, purchase there with the dry suits. So that's why we're only asking for two. Tourniquets and chest seals. North American Rescue, who also supplies our Stop the Bleed kits, has a very consistent reliable quality product in regards to tourniquets. If you look at our officers, as I have done, I've asked them where they got the tourniquet holder, as well as the tourniquet, oh, I bought it, I bought it at SLS. The good news is, is that it seems like the deputies have been consistent with those that have purchased those things, but my problem is, is that they've purchased. And, and I completely understand the need for them. If you remember just recently, in this particular month in Maryland, I want to say Baltimore, there was an officer that shot four times in his leg, and his partner was able to apply a tourniquet to him and literally saved his life. So this is not only for being able to help our fellow officer, but also be able to apply tourniquets to ourselves if need be. And when you think about the preventable deaths pre-hospital, you're talking upwards of forty-three percent. That involves massive bleeding. So when we talk about those kind of statistics, that the buying a tourniquet pouch with a tourniquet in it could mean the world of difference in reverse, to help reduce that and increasing the chance of survival and mass bleeding injuries. So we're looking at five-hundred, five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars in tourniquet and chest seals. Now, again, the Stop the Bleed fallout kits that the Stop the Bleed Subcommittee deals with, they could be purchased at forty-seven dollars from North American Rescue. They have tourniquets in those kits, but I'm talking more along the lines, the kits that would be on the belt, or it'd be on the person of the individual. So they have it in their immediate arms reach, so. Three thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty dollars for stingers, for six of them, that's five-hundred-and-twenty dollars a piece for road spikes. Three thousand in canine housing fencing with concrete, that would be for that third canine, something that's not been allotted by generosity of training.
We talked about it in the back of the building there?
No, sir, this would be at the individual canine officer's residence. And then the seven-thousand, five-hundred-dollar ACE NIC kits, three hundred at twenty-five dollars a piece. We are running low on those, but those are drug field test kits. Seventeen thousand dollars for an advisory sign, and this is part of my presentation that I wanted to put for you. Now, you're gonna see a sergeant from Cedar Hill, Texas, and he's gonna talk to you about the Speed Alert Radar messaging sign. I'm asking the council to help me purchase one, and I'll purchase the other at seventeen thousand dollars. And the reason is, is that these things have not only multiple uses, but they save so much money in regards to dedication of manpower. If Mr. Barthard says, I've got a speeding complaint in Hedgesville, well, okay. And I can tell you, at the meetings that I've been to so far, everyone has a complaint on speeding. It's happening, it's everywhere, but is it truly a problem? This Speed Alert Radar system can collect data, covert, not data, source, license plates, or personal information or anything. How many violations are occurring around Route Nine West? Is there truly a problem here near this subdivision? And if the problem's identified, then we go to the second phase. We then raise this sign up from its covert position to a advisory sign that says, your speed is this, and if you're above the posted speed limit, it gives red and blue strobes. Not only does it show you the speed that you're going, but it also flashes to warn you that you're going over the speed limit. So the community, as I go around and talk to the community, I advise them, I say, this is what's gonna happen. First, we're gonna identify the complaint and see if it's credible, if it's substantiated, we'll deploy a sign. We deploy the sign and let that be your amnesty period, so to speak, that, hey, we all understand we're going to where we need to go, or remind somewhere else, somewhere else, and we tend to have, forget, this is the reminder for it. Yes, this is, this went from forty-five down to thirty-five, slow down. Big problem there, near the square. So anyway, that advises them with us. Now, if it's still continuing to be a problem, and the sign is not working, then now I can focus manpower in that specific area, and I can saturate that area. So it reduces unnecessary manpower dedication in certain areas. If I had two, I could deploy one northbound, I could deploy one southbound. And this isn't, this wouldn't be like your interstate sign where it works half the time, or the whole thing's lit up, or if it partially works or not at all. These are signs that also help with messaging, that can contain up to twelve memorized messages within this advisory sign, with COVID vaccinations might be, or to help, let's say, for example, on the eleven-vehicle pileup that I was privy to at three in the morning on Interstate Eighty-One, near the twelve, no, I'm sorry, the twenty-three mile mark, northbound. And that involved eight tractor trailers and three sedans. We would have loved to have had a sign that detoured people, because our response from Department of Highways, no blame on them, they're busy, and they're working overtime themselves with all the snowstorms. But having a sign that points and directs people, especially in an area that I found myself in, working with the reserves, where at the twenty-three north end, come over a slight crest of a hill, and there's the twenty-three offering. Well, now you're dealing with icy road conditions, and now you've got a tractor trailer that weighs forty thousand plus pounds, what have you, that's coming down the road, it's gotta slow down, because they're not seeing me soon enough. I had to back down there, and I had to, basically, two units were separate, and I couldn't communicate effectively with the reserves, other than radio, which was already being used up because of the accident. Advisory signs can help reduce the, and prevent additional accidents from happening, plus your COVID vaccination sites and whatnot. So we can use them for community events, we can use them for traffic enforcement, and we can use them to help reduce costs of the department as a whole. And the sergeant from Cedar Hill is going to, basically, this is a two-minute video that they're gonna tell you exactly how it's helped them.
The information is gathered, and you would say, okay, this is a hotspot, I want to dedicate my resources of my manpower out there to take care of it. That's the next phase, right?
It's completely real-time, yes. It's complete real-time, it's stored as, in the traffic, what's called the traffic cloud, as a subscription of fifteen hundred dollars a year that I don't mind paying for out of the funds that we have. And our deputies would be those that are in control. Now, reserves will be part of this. We're going to deploy these things, we plan on incorporating them. They will have real-time information through an app, and they can download it secure.
Is this a total, is it a total cost purchase, or is there, have you built in, in what you're talking about, maintenance for the, these type of things?
Yes, warranties included, the trailers included, the subscription with traffic clouds included, and within that seventeen thousand dollar thing.
We've got, you know, five devices that we deploy regularly. Since we got the trailer, that trailer is deployed almost three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. For us, the data is really priceless. It is truly a force multiplier for us, because we can almost plan out an officer's time during his full shift, so that he is in the area that he's going to be most effective for each hour of his day. The first thing that I look at when, after we've deployed the sign, is the extended speed summary, and that combined with the compliance and risk report gives me a pretty good idea of whether we actually have a speeding problem there, or if we've just got, you know, one or two vehicles that speed every time they go up and down the street. If we are going to take an enforcement action and really target a particular area, then that's when I'll bring in the enforcement priorities and look at scheduling out, you know, the officer's time throughout multiple different areas in the city. We're pretty open with what we share with the citizens, as far as the data that we collect from these. The customer service aspect that we're able to provide to that citizen that called and complained is, I mean, I can't say enough about it. The capabilities, you get so much information, the potential of the use is almost endless.
They have the down seventeen. All right, so you can see the sign, how it's displayed, and of course, if there's a violation, of course, the strobes start going off, which, you know, people don't necessarily pay attention to the sign itself, they've seen one, they've seen five. The lights add a visual contrast to it. And again, it uses variable messaging, different text lines to it, it's got solar panel to it, minimum of a two, there's a two-year warranty on the batteries that's in it, that's covered by them, or you call this, but obviously, there's a bunch of data that we can, we can collect and be able to identify if there's a true problem. Let's, and hopefully, I'm, hopefully, through that and the need that you see that I've hopefully expressed here, is that if we can have these, these items, these advisory signs, that I think that we can address it a lot more efficiently, and be able to manage manpower, where it needs to go, where we need to saturate, where we don't need to saturate, and also how it can assist the community in different events that we're gonna have planned in the near future, especially things that are going on. The twelve-thousand-dollar request is for the Special Response Team guns from Daniel Defense that are of a twelve-point-five-inch barrel length, which is four inches shorter than the standard barrel rifle, which is conducive and more practical in relation to a tactical team entering into confined, a confined environment. Generally, I don't know of any tactical team that I've worked with that did not have the shortened barrels. What this would alleviate would be our shortage of our long guns for our officers. So the guns that the nine-member SRT team has now would be passed down to our road officers, so our road officers have.
What caliber are they?
They're five-five-six.
Why, are you trying to figure out how bad it could have hurt?
I didn't know if you were talking about shotguns or long rifles? No, yeah, these are five-five-six. Haven't interested in shotgun.
I would think you would.
Lieutenant Christian has put in a lot of work in regards to justifying the reason for this request for these specific weapons. They provided armorers class for free, Daniel Defense does. They will be identified with an etched SRT patch in the mag wall with our SRT identifier on it. I said that the barrels are four inches shorter, and our department is short on long rifles anyway, so I don't want to go back to buy anymore. These could be, these ones that are used now will be passed down. They stand behind their rifles with a lifetime warranty. We are clipping them with Vortex scopes. Those are twelve-hundred apiece, but they are the, my SRT team deputy Chad Jones has tested them out, and they seem to pass the SRT test anyway. And I believe that's all I have for that. I did want to, law enforcement uniforms, that's where we're at, three-forty-five. Requested an increase of fifty-nine thousand for forty-four dollars, twenty-one thousand and seventy-two dollars, which listed vests for new hires or replacements needed. And then twenty-four at eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, that would be PT armor vests that can be received faster, they're good quality, and they're cheaper than what was previously purchased. I can tell you that they're literally. I can tell you that they're literally one point four pounds lighter than the old vests that they're currently wearing. And we have been able to get into additional equipment, low bearing vests, which are purchased currently in the blue line. And our whole idea, and I asked Mr. Davis to supplies with workers' comp claims, and then when you do the research into the CDC report that was January of twenty twenty, and I'd be more than happy to provide that to you, in regards to weight on the hips and the, as an officer on a ten-hour shift, four days a week, and the, the bearing on the hips that, that occurs, the lower back injuries, or the, let's say, the pain that is complained upon out of seven-four officers, literally sixty-four percent of those seven-four complain with lower back pain, is detailed in the toward the whole four, even statistics on that, but obviously, this is something we identified early, and we wanted to try and take care of it. So at this point in time, we have, I don't remember exactly the number of that we've equipped so far, but due to our reallocation of the weight and the purchase of these outer vests that distributes that weight above and more equally on the upper torso, we have reduced the hip weight by six point eight pounds. If you think about that weight being carried around for a ten, maybe even a twelve-hour shift, that's quite a bit of a load off the hips. You couple that with a, a health, mental health and physical health wellness program that we are promoting internally, whether it be advisements for additional, looking into body mass index type of scheduling for our officers to, to, in conjunction with our insurance agency like the U Medicine does with their employees, we keep their BMI within a certain percentage point, and then that will reduce or save them four hundred dollars a year in their insurance costs. The Berkeley County School System, I believe that they were, they haven't done it recently, but they were mandating blood tests be done annually, and because of the blood test, I want you to think more of the long life, preventive maintenance and identifying problems earlier. So without getting too deep in weeds on it, so not only have we lightened up the weight, but we're promoting more of a healthy living lifestyle inside the department, as well as potentially saving insurance costs in that way, as well as workers' comp claims. So that's, that's part of the request for the fifty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars for the uniforms. And the thirty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars was outfitting the deputy's new position. Three thousand nine hundred dollars of that total request was for honor guard uniforms, twelve of those uniforms at three hundred and twenty-five, that would include the jacket, sand, brown strap, and shoe.
The honor guard, they, at one time, I thought that got abandoned for a while, is that right?
This, they, it, I'm not so sure if it was abandoned per se as much as it was just abandoned, or not used.
They still were, they still had an honor guard, but they weren't being used for. They, they took, I think, and the deputies take it upon themselves to almost uniform themselves their, their, for a while. I don't know exactly.
For the vests, we've been going with PT armor. We have now the ability to not only put it in your exterior carrier, but on the inside of the uniform as well, we go to Class A's, we're not wearing the, let's say, the, the outer vests, we're going to, let's say, a special event where it requires us to wear the Class A's we will have now in our vests. We are receiving a discount that was three ninety-six per vest, covering the vest at a, originally priced was three ninety-six per, we got it priced for two hundred and forty-eight, it saved us a hundred and forty-eight dollars each. And we've, we went through the entire department.
Sheriff, what's the life expectancy of that vest?
I'm sorry?
What's the life expectancy of that vest?
I believe, well, the ballistic panels are over six years, they're not five. Yes, they're, I think you would, I'd have to go look at the actual paperwork, but I was sure that it was only five.
I'm just looking.
Generally, they're five.
If you're trying to do it by one time, a recurring cost.
It is a recurring.
Five or six years down the road.
It would be, yes. Depending on the vendor you go with, and the technology with the vendor, they've been able to achieve anywhere between five and eight. I believe this particular vendor's six, if I remember correctly.
And there is, and there is, Mr. Delegato, you are working on some, some situation with some of the vests that we just bought?
Well, I don't think we ever paid for any of the, we terminated a contract a couple of years ago, it's never been built. If the department got some vests that actually worked, but then they threw them away. They never sent us a bill.
I'm thinking that was last year sometime, and it hadn't been long.
October twenty nineteen, when they originally started volumizing, and we didn't start getting vests until late. We were constantly getting the problems, fitting correctly too, too short, back end was cut too short, there were so many issues, and I want to say out of twenty-two, only twenty-two of them, we could, we got our problem solved. And it was only supposed to be, it wasn't a ninety-eight hour, and it wasn't a year.
It was, yeah, a couple months, three months, and it lasted forever, a lot of back and forth, so finally we terminated the contract.
Alan, to, to any point, doesn't it make more sense from a budget to look at, if you're going to put it in a budget amount, a yearly budget amount, doesn't it make more sense to, i- if they're going to last five years, put one-fifth of the budget in every year in order to make that rotation always happen?
You have a thing I want to point out, Sheriff, and, and, and not that I don't support what you're, what you're proposing, any big ticket items, we have to go through competitive bidding process, we can't just go out and purchase them, because that is something that's closely looked at by the honor guard. So I know you're, you, a lot of the prices you have are from specific vendors, that's not to say that we purchase from them, but...
Well, yeah.
And that's in the, that's, in the vest come to mind.
But he can create an RFP that has all those requirements, so that everybody that's fitting is, fitting is what you're, what you're asking for.
A lot of times, stuff like that, too, is signals, sole source, and there, there's, it's kind of like on the fire side, you have your local representative, and no one can have territory, and nobody can command and compete with that territory. Yeah, and I was going to say the same thing, even with the ammunition and all this stuff.
We just know how competitive that market is, and we went through that with the vests two years ago with the Sheriff's Department, when they wanted a specific vest, we had to go through a bidding process.
Did not change anything in, is it, oh, seven-one, three hundred, or seven hundred? I will, will talk, if I could, just briefly on my attachments, you brought up attachment A under the justification for the, for, make the four new positions I was requesting, but the, we have, as part of an outreach program, not an outreach, but a community involved law enforcement, in that same spirit, I've asked for a special civilian investigator to, part-time, to join a cold case investigative team, which has already been started, but not only by Lieutenant Burns, but Deputy Ritchie, to reopen the Mike Kilmore case and investigate that. Benefits in many ways, not only does the civilian investigator allow for a, a community involved, let's say, a fresh pair of eyes inside the sheriff's office, but also this investigator has the background in regards to being a retired law enforcement investigator, very skilled in interview and interrogation, that can actually assist the sheriff's office and have that citizen, that Berkeley County citizen element joining in with the investigation for a true unbiased look at this case. And if there was any gaps identified within, which we've already have identified within this investigation, and we definitely want to clear that up. We've got leads to follow, we've already started, I need assistance in doing this, obviously, with us trying to fill the vacancies and whatnot, I'm not saying I don't have enough people, all I'm saying is, is that it should be a great help and a very good, very good message to the community that we are trying to take care of these cold cases that, that need to be looked into further, so the family and the victims involved have resolution with these things. And I bring up the Mike Kilmore case specifically because there are several leads that we need to follow, and they need to be followed rather rapidly. Some leads have, some things you can't just lay your head down overnight and expect that same lead to be there the next day, so these, these things need to be followed immediately. There are some things with that specific case that need to be followed, there's the Oars Farm Market robbery that I'm specifically interested in, that needs to be looked at as well. Again, the civilian, the part-time civilian investigator for that would be ideal to be able to help address that.
That's not a real difficult case, I don't think.
That's one of the reasons why I asked for a part-time, I don't see this to be a full time position, but I do see it as a, an element of community involved, at least when you're asking for certified, vetted Berkeley County citizen to come in and join the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office investigative team to help solve Berkeley County problems. And those two cases come to mind specifically, so that's one of the reasons why I was asking for that. Um... Let me get it on the, pop the old bit down. I know we're getting ready to go into seven oh one, but I would like to bring up the fact that we have started a litter control and county ordinance program within the department, and we have a deputy that's representing that, a deputy that's met with Mr. Hogan and Waste Management, and has already went through the civilian litter program training and had completed that training. And I would like the council to entertain down the road the potential of hiring a civilian litter enforcement person for, to help us to join our, our program to help bring together, again, not only a community involved law enforcement department, but there are so many other litter programs out there, including Mr. Lang's program, and what the county's done in that effort, but social media groups that are out there actively participating, and they're just, we have, there's not a lot of collaboration there, especially with the enforcement side of things, you've got the pickup, there's plenty of volunteers, there's more great things, but then you still deal with the enforcement problem side of that. And I, I find that too, there's a gap in communication between us effectively being able to enforce those from a law enforcement perspective, and it's always put on the back burner of things because we've got so many other calls to take care of. So what I would like to do, as I had seen in, when I worked for Morgantown PD, is they have those smaller elements within their department that handle those things. And I think the ATV problem that we have at enforcement's paradise, the, the litter problems that we have on these illegal dumps and stuff, you don't know how often it's been showed to me, we can better and more efficiently handle those things if we have people that are actually, we have an element that actually focuses on that. So understand that we have a deputy that, that we've identified that's already taken a great stride in doing that effort, but I would just like the council to consider some help in that regard here down the road. I believe that puts us seven oh one process service.
Sheriff, before you go to seven oh one, is your money in your budget currently for vegetarian costs for your new dogs?
For our new dogs?
Yes, sir.
Um, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I know they, they need care, and they want to take good care of them.
Yeah. That's never, yeah, we, we, actually, there's plenty. Seven oh one, there was no increases that I noticed.
There are no operating costs in seven oh one, it's all sours.
Deputy reserves, let's see, seven oh eight, line out of three forty-one, I've asked for an increase on the police special duty supplies and materials. I would like the council to understand that I have asked a lot from the reserves. Mr. Masters and his leadership have met with me on many occasions, and we agree on the expectations that they need to be more active. They are currently patrolling in developments who have called in requesting patrol, I don't know if you remember the Spring Mills incident, where there were some shots fired up there, there were some citizens that called in from that particular development or immediate area that was concerned, and there's even out-of-state officers, cruisers parked in their driveways, sitting within that same development where that incident happened. So there has to be, you know, obviously, if you see a cruiser parked in the driveway, they're home, they're at rest, nothing's happening, but if they see activity, if they see actual reserve deputy, and they've been instructed in regards to what their duties are, and, and, and they understand those, but they're doing more community patrols at the request of the citizens. They will be transporting the speed alert system that we sell, they will be assisting us with access that we've already sold. I've asked for them to restructure their, their, their element into three separate groups. You have your community events group, you have your tactical group, and then you have your traffic group. Tactical group would help more so with transports and crime scenes and assistance in that respect. Community groups will see, in the near future, that will have community events, and they will be taking part of that, and youth fair and different things like that to have. But they're going to be more involved. They've gotten at least five more applicants that have applied, and they're, they're definitely picking up in their numbers. So I'm asking the council to please consider a twenty-five hundred dollar increase for the budget of the reserves, that way we can maintain some TASER training, some OC spray, verbal deconfliction training, and de-escalation, so if they ever find themselves in a situation that they can, they can help, maybe they can also patrol places like the Gage parking lot and other things, so there's, there's more being asked of them, and I would like the, the council to consider that increase for them. Seven sixteen, animal patrol.
And, and the reason, just a little bit of fest, the reason why this is going down so low is because when we gave them money, they wouldn't use that all. down so low is because when we gave them money, they wouldn't even use that all.
Yes.
They weren't being used, period.
Yes, sir.
You know, we could see Sheriff, your vision and, and your department's vision of utilizing the place, I call it, still called the place reserve, is, is another one, just like we talked about the volunteer firefighters, it's a hundred percent volunteer. And, you know, they're, they're doing it on, on their own time and they're, they're just wanting to give back to their community, so it's a win-win situation.
I feel that, like I said, so much progress has occurred with the reserves already, people are kicking down the door to be a part of it. And these people that are, are wanting to apply, they're applying because they, they're, they're very active people, they expect to be used, and the requirement is that they be used a minimum of 10 hours a month. And if they're, you know, Bob has really tightened down the hatches, so to speak, then yeah, if you're not doing 10 hours a month, then you're not getting a cruiser to take home, if you're not being active, well, we'll, we'll give those resources to the reserve to be in.
Would be great for community places.
It was, well, I'll give that 11-car accident on the interstate on Route 23 Northbound is a perfect example. We had an individual show up there who, who was active in assisting law enforcement that came to the scene to help us out, and that individual orchestrated the, the large tow trucks requests that needed to come in for eight tractor trailers. And he alleviated that responsibility completely from the deputies. So the deputies did not, the two that were working that scene did not have to concern themselves with the rotation of when they arrived, hey, you're getting this tractor trailer, hey, because that's chaos in and by itself. And then before you know it, you've got tow services fighting over different toes or on, you know, or what they're taking, so they alleviate our responsibilities on massive incidences like that altogether. So that, that was a blessing just to happen there for that particular scene. Me and Bob hung out for the greater part of nine o'clock till three o'clock in the morning on the interstate there, so we've had more discussions on improving the reserves and getting them more active, so he's completely on board and ready to go. Animal patrol was more 716, it is more or less, I've asked him and his submission to do an additional $6,000 for purchase of new furniture. I do understand, and this is just a point of consideration for the council, that since that request, I have become aware of the day reports center furniture that's being, for lack of a better word, abandoned, I guess, and then we, I would be more than happy to take that off their hands if they're getting new furniture. So that's, that's come up, so, but that's why I asked Chief Jones to put in additional funding, because if you were to walk over there, it is in disarray, cops are following up and stuff like that.
We have given them right of first refusal of that furniture.
Now, the last part I want to-
They have to carry it down the rubbery track there, don't they?
We didn't say we would deliver, we just said we'd give them right.
I'll find the trucks. Lower the road track.
Yeah, they're all down the old railroad track.
That's their hat.
Yeah, yeah.
So I do want to talk, just to kind of bring this to closure, I do want to talk on the special programs that we have in, in place so you're more aware and possibly wrap your head around more of, of our intentions is, our, we talked about the health and wellness program, the reduction of weight, 6.8 pounds, part of the, the mental wellbeing of our deputies. I've asked for several pastors in the area to come up with a, a contractual agreement, a, a, let's say retainer, so to speak, that we retain services for those that are involved in officer-related shootings. Who are they talking to, who are they, you're talking about, when you talk about a pastor, you're talking about someone who's certified in marriage counseling, someone who's certified in domestic abuse, substance abuse, and some of these pastors that are being spoken with are former law enforcement officers. So now you have like-minded people sitting in a room and continuously being offered to the deputies. There doesn't have to be a bad situation that occurs before they know that they have that outlet to reach out to. So I, I don't have a problem bearing that burden, I believe contractual agreement that the, that has been looked at is $150 an hour when needed. So it's not like we're paying a rate every month, for twelve months we're not using, so when they're needed, so I don't understand that we're incorporating that with about four pastors in the area, and making, making sure that we're putting that out to the officers to, to ensure that they know that that's available at any time. Participation in the local emergency planning committee, the Stop the Bleed program, and community-oriented policing services, the COGS grant, I've already touched base on the fact that I've talked with Tracy, and we have a representative at our office who's going to specialize in grants that has in the past that has worked, that will work closely with Tracy, so we're mirroring each other on the same page and we're not trying to catch up with that, so that we can stay constantly. The Handle With Care Initiative, we are currently piloting four, five schools with the Handle With Care Initiative. And all that is, if I go into a residence and arrest both parents for domestic, or let's say we did a search warrant, both parents get arrested, or a parent gets arrested for drug distribution or whatnot, or the 13-year-old that was standing there just witnessed all that, that's considered a traumatic event. And as far as the law enforcement agency at the officer there, if we see that, then we go to this link, we put in name, school, age, just a little bit of information, and send it to that specific school so that, that staff knows that, that this particular student, this particular child has had a traumatic event, let's look at alternative means of educating them, or they might need some time away from a group of people, there's just additional, oh, it is what it is, Handle With Care, handle that student with some care. And, and it's a very simple program, we're, we're going in the Back Creek Valley area, the Hedgesville area, the Inwood area, and Spring Mills area. Those are the areas that we're piloting, so once we're, we're done with that pilot program, I'm looking towards potentially August timeframe to, to bring that program to complete fruition, to participate. There's a representative on each shift as we speak that, that will specifically handle that. Law publications, I believe they've gotten upwards of over $5,000 to $6,000. They provide literature, they go out, they came to me and they go out and actually get sponsorships at no cost to us. They garnered the sponsorship from local businesses, and these are publications that deal in substance abuse, domestic abuse, drug abuse, coloring books for kids, and a lot of resource information on how to be able to maybe stalking tips and different things like that, literature that'll be provided to our office and for us to be able to pass out at community events, but our front office didn't have so much as even a brochure holder. Now it does. And this information will be contained in our front lobby office as well for those that come and visit and that are there for other things and they see this, and it'll be available. We talked about the litter and ordinance enforcement program and the accelerated criminal enforcement team of the Blake, uh, brought Lieutenant Burns here with me because he is the direct representative for the governor's highway safety program, and he can speak a lot more intelligently than me in regards to where we're at with that program at this point. I believe in the past, they paid, we may have had an interpretation that they paid for the salary of the deputy, but that's now overtime equipment, so if I can ask the Lieutenant Burns to come up and speak, just a bullet point on that.
Sheriff, I don't mean to walk out of there, you have to guide it to him.
Sure, sure, sure.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The highway safety program, in trying to bring it back, is going to be checking the benefits. In talking with Charleston, when we last participated under Sheriff Laymaster and very beginning with Sheriff Killers, they noticed a sharp increase in serious traffic accidents or serious injury traffic accidents, traffic fatalities, and accidents of general, they also noticed a sharp increase because of the line for people when I rest or I drive on the interstate. And since we've withdrawn from that program, they've seen the trend reverse. At the time that we withdrew, it was my understanding, and I've confirmed now, I've been talking with Sheriff Harmon, that they were changing their program to a pilot program, which makes sense a little bit that they cannot do, they are run by the National Highway Safety. So they are back to the old way of doing this through the parent agency, who is basically laying the money out for overtime expenses, and then that area is reversed. The way through the work we had, I forget what the full title was, Margaret Walker, and also her, she ran the program on their way down here, didn't have gone to some county approach, kind of worked with the host agency. We are on board to work with them again. That, that's all but done, it's just kind of decided to pick it up. What we're looking to try to work with the county on is to save ourselves some money and get some additional equipment, some additional training opportunities, by way of being a host agency. The way the, the program basically works, in the last two years that we've suspended fully, and the year that we withdrew, we saw an excess of 800 extra hours of overtime involved along the road towards some scripted traffic, financial calls, they weren't, they were going to force you through the traffic, an excess of 1,300 public contacts this year. Last year that we participated, we were on track to meet or exceed them, as an extra $23,000 plus each of the years that were coming in and going out. I'll tell you, I'm a big fan, I'm a big opponent of traffic, court, traffic safety. Playtime, I'm not following to the radio, I'm not sitting tight in the courts. The flowers to go out and do something that I truly believe, there's a lot of the guys agree with that. You see a lot of engagement.
So, so would this, so would this be, you're saying, could be divided up between officers, rather than just saying one officer's dedicated per shift?
Correct. So we, we will get a chunk of money from the highway safety group. When my responsibility in the last day is mine, I think it's going to be again, I'd see, I'd take the overtime rates of our officers and basically, like, I've got, I've got a thousand dollars for credit. I can, if you ever want to participate, they meet up and do many hours, so I can give them a little extra so we don't currently overdo, then the very last day, hey, I got this last amount, so someone go ahead. So it goes out fairly to everybody, everybody's got the opportunity to participate, they got to meet you out and get some of that money in their pockets. And the overtime rates exclusively are being reimbursed to the agency, so it's coming out of the sheriff's overtime budget, it's going to be back to the county by, by Charleston, or I'm sorry, from whoever the host agency is being, and then they return back the overtime bill. Where we see the savings if we agree to be the host agency, is we're going to see additional money coming in, additional PR, additional units on the road, more hours on the road, more enforcement, and some of the things that don't typically have reimbursed, now be able to reimburse. So for example, when I don't, when I last talked to him, he had to check whether it was FICA or DSRS contributions, the one or both of those, we would still get a pocket of them, now as we, as a host agency, we reimburse. That's, that's where, we're good on the new science of pick them in order to participate in the general. We're looking to try and advance ourselves and, and advance this county, just to be talking to those people.
When we did have that program, if I'm not mistaken, well, I know I'm not, that's funny, but, um, one of our deputies may have been you, I can't remember, was recognized as being the best one in the state of West Virginia.
We had, during that, that real good three-year span, when we really-
This two years.
After it over, we sent regularly four to six people, I think, to the impaired driving conference down in Beckley, all the way to Rondell, prior to that. All six were honored for impaired driving enforcement, the second one were honored for seatbelt enforcement and disruptive driving. So at the state level, they honor the top fifteen every year, I don't know if they're in the conference this year, I'm pretty sure they canceled last year, next year, current pandemic. But yes, we have routinely and regularly been recognized at state level for the activities that we, as, as an individual agency.
Right.
The highway safety program in Charleston is very exciting, we've heard from Sheriff Harmon, I can tell you that much, they're very excited to have the conversations that they, that they did. Since Margaret Walker program went away, they've kind of been trending more, so to speak, they've, they've been working with Jefferson County. But they are really, really excited to get back to working with us, hoping that we can maybe move forward in any bigger capacity than we used to be. Like I said, it's going to open us up, open us up to cost saving, it's going to open us up to more opportunities for equipment. He's done what's a far to tell us, you know, the computers, you simply, you don't think you're going to work. At the end of their fiscal year, when they have money left over, it's going to go to the community receiver.
We're looking at Sheriff, reuse some of the vehicles that will be replaced and do the additional positions, right?
Yes.
Anyway, have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that completes my, my discussion, so I apologize for getting lengthy with it, but first dab at it, and hopefully you'll give most of my, all that some consideration. And again, I thank you for the time and, you know, being here, thanks a lot.
I think, I think you give us no reason not to consider at all, you know, but it's a big list.
It is.
I can say you're not backwards. But, you know, we're, as I said before, it's, it's exciting times, you know, it's, 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 I, I think sometimes we've got to be careful about what we wish for.
Yes, yes.
You know, but, well, thank you, thanks for a great presentation.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right. Only thing we have on our list is I just want the public, anybody here who wants to speak out. All right, Mr. Barnhart.
Mr. Press, I'm due to recess.
We are recessed.
You got me, I can go home?
Unless you want to stick around, do two o'clock in the ambulance store either.
Okay.
Okay. I'll go home and take a nap.
Been a while since I've been to Anvil's authority meeting. Not that I'm begging to go or anything.
It's up in the public, you're, you're welcome to tend.
It's a, it's a good board right now.
Animal?
Yeah, maybe a couple things that I wish I did do, but it is what it is.
Take care, gentlemen.
Bye. See you.
Thank you.
Get some lunch, see you.
They're going to broadcast the seal here in a minute.
I got three here, you two.
Yeah.
Yep.